2025 Planning Commission Meeting. I am Blanny Miller, Chair of the Commission. We have a very full agenda today, so I would ask the Commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of all presentations and any public comments so that we can move through the agenda efficiently. There is one change on today's agenda. That's Item E7 under New Business, the rezoning case Z1025 at 8125 Leesville Road. Due to a timely request for a reasonable accommodation, we will move this case to be heard immediately after New Business Item E3 without objection. So after we complete this case, it will be effectively a New Business Item Number Four, we will then proceed with the remainder of the agenda in its stated order. So we start every meeting with an opportunity for the public to comment on an item not contained on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda today? Then seeing none, we can move on to our consent agenda. There's one item on consent, TCC 5124 at 9308 Fairbanks Drive. We heard this case at our May 13th meeting and deferred it to allow the applicant more time to resolve some boundary disputes. The recommended action is to request a 45-day extension of time to allow for the Commission to defer further discussion until our April 12th meeting. Are there any discussion on that item? And with that, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? There's a motion to second. Any further discussion? By show of hands, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. On to Old Business. There's one item on the agenda today. That's Z5424 at Tryon Road. On May 27th, the Commission received a full staff presentation, applicant presentation, and heard from the public. We deferred action on this case until today's meeting in order to allow time for the applicant to submit revised conditions, and our focus today will be on any updates or changes since the last meeting. And we will turn to Erin Klinger for a presentation from the City Planning Staff on updates to the case.
Good morning, everyone. Erin Klinger, Planning and Development. So the request has changed slightly from the original. Originally, it was to rezone from R4 and, sorry, R4 and R10 with the special parking overlay just to RX4. It is now R10, the request is now R10 for the hook piece and RX4 for the remainder of the property. So the zoning in the area is residential. The closest zoning, RX zoning, is to the northeast, but there is R10 zoning adjacent to the site. This is an aerial view of the area. There's another aerial view closer up. Here are some street views of the property from various angles. So here are the revised conditions. They have split the conditions for the property, the portion that's being zoned RX and then the portion that's being zoned R10. So for the portion that's being rezoned to RX, the first condition remains, that was original from the previous conditions. They've added conditions limiting, reducing the limitation on the number of dwelling units to 400. They've added a height limitation for properties within 100 feet of Bruce Circle. If more than 100 units are developed, they will install a traffic signal at Fairway, Drive, and Tryon Road if NCDOT permits. They will provide a cross-access stub for the property at 1526 Tryon. And then they've also added an affordable housing condition. 2% of the dwelling units will be affordable for households earning 60% AMI. And then for the portion of the property that are being rezoned R10, the boarding house use will be prohibited. They've put a cap on the number of dwelling units, and they have prohibited the apartment building type. So under the existing zoning, the maximum number of units would be 290. Under the proposed zoning, it would be a total of 575, with 175 on the R10 piece and 400 on the RX piece. This has not changed. The limits on the square footage are the same. So it is still inconsistent with the future land use map, but it is consistent with the comprehensive plan overall. Here are the consistent policies, and then here are the inconsistent policies. As a reminder, the deadline for action would be July 26th, and it would require a future land use map amendment. That is all.
Thank you very much. So we've already heard from the applicant and the public, but so I can get a sentence by show of hands, would the applicant or any members of the public like to provide additional comments today? See one additional hand, is that correct? That's it? In that case, I'd like to provide an additional two minutes to each side. We will start with the applicant and those in favor.
Good morning, Chair Miller, members of the Planning Commission. Toby Coleman with Smith Anderson, 150 Fayetteville Street here in Raleigh. Here on behalf of the property owner, Raleigh Golf Association, and Dominion, which is the applicant for 1604 and 1610 Tryon. I think, I won't go over the changes to the zoning conditions. We're available for questions. I did want to give a brief update because one of the, one of the things we discussed was improvements potentially to Fairway Drive. So just as an update, we have had some good conversations with Planning and Transportation over the last month-ish. We've gotten some, we've gotten some scope, gotten some costs. We are still having to work through to figure out what the scope of a development agreement would be, but we are fairly hopeful that we can come to some sort of arrangement whereby we can make some, some improvements to Fairway Drive outside of, off-site, excuse me. So we're fairly excited about that. Still going through the works. As you know, Raleigh has not done a ton of development agreements yet, so it's still sort of a process that we're trying to work through, but we're fairly hopeful on that one. Otherwise, we're available for questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak in support? And seeing none, we will open up public comment for anyone in opposition. Those opposed have a total of two minutes to speak. Please come to the podium and introduce yourself.
My name is Gene Cobb. I'm a retired civilian here. I lived in Meredith West Division for about 40, past 40 years. I served as an advisor to the Delta Sigma Phi Chapter House at the, at 1526 Tryon Road. And we were asking for two conditions to be added, one of which has been addressed. One condition we had asked for previously that has, has not been resolved is, is for a buffer to be placed between, on our western border between the RX4 proposed property and our, our property. We had asked originally for wooded, the existing land there now is wooded fairly heavily. We'd asked that a tree preservation area be preserved there for a width of 65 feet. And that was rejected by Mr. Coleman's group. Our alumni control board took the issue up at our June meeting, and their request now is for a, for a wall to be constructed, a brick masonry wall from the front property line to the existing sewer easement, so a distance of approximately 500 feet with minimum height of six and a half feet. And the other ask, we'd ask is your condition number five be amended to make, clarify that there's, would be no gaps in the right-of-way from the stove out to our property line.
Thank you very much. We will now bring the discussion back to the table for questions and comments from Commissioners. I will start us off. We listed a number of items for the applicant to address at our last meeting. Those items have been addressed in this new round of conditions, so I want to thank the applicant for that. Would the applicant like to respond to the one open question from the fraternity representative regarding the buffer?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Cobb, for coming. We took a look at that. As Mr. Cobb said, we, the initial ask was for 65 feet of tree conservation area, which we just, wasn't feasible with the site plan. And the request for a wall, frankly, we haven't taken a look at because it came after our deadline for resubmitting zoning conditions. But I'll note that we don't really see a need for it. This is currently used as a fraternity house, and it's zoned OX4. So we don't really see a need for a buffer between RX4 apartments and a fraternity house zoned OX4.
Thank you very much. That's all of my questions. Any other comments, questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Fox.
In regards to Case Z5224, I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated June 24th, 2025, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment. This recommend, this recommendation also includes an amendment to the future land use map to the extent described in the adopted consistency statement.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Otwell has seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to New Business, we have three items that originally appeared on our last Planning Commission meeting, but we were unable to hear those due to, we had to cancel the meeting due to a lack of quorum. So the first item is TC 1124, pedestrian passages and crosswalks. And we will turn to Justin Butcher for a presentation from City Planning Staff.
Good morning, Planning Commission. I'm Megan Nation with the Office of Sustainability. I will be introducing TC 1124, pedestrian passages and crosswalks today, and then handing it over to our wonderful planning staff to continue on. So this is all about pedestrian safety and comfort, and also implementation of our climate action plan. So a little bit of background on our climate action plan, if you're not familiar. We have done several greenhouse gas emissions inventories over many years here for the city, and consistently, over half of our emissions are related to transportation. So this is something to keep in mind as we move forward with this text change. For this one, we will see several goals and actions supporting climate action here in Raleigh, namely reducing greenhouse gas emissions, reducing vehicle miles traveled, and improving safety, comfort for people walking and biking across the city. Also, a little bit of background related to our community climate action plan, you'll see here abbreviated as CCAP. So implementation here in Raleigh takes multiple forms. Could be policies, investments, plans, or projects. In some cases, ordinances can advance our community climate action plan and related goals such as health, walkability, and affordability. Topics have included transportation, related to clean transportation, as you've seen previously, as well as this pedestrian passages and crosswalks item today. We are also working on some items related to heat and resilience, as well as sustainable buildings. Before I hand it over to planning, we do want to highlight pedestrian safety and comfort has been a major theme in recent planning work. Walkability here in Raleigh is an issue. 57% of respondents in the community survey called their walking experience neutral or below average, while 80% said neutral or below average for alternative transportation options. Although, I will now hand it over to our planning staff to continue on. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Booker with Planning and Development. Good morning. This text change, TC 1124, is meeting consistent with the following policies and actions as shown on the screen, namely pedestrian infrastructure, enhancing pedestrian circulation, among others. This ordinance really boils down to three main components. I'll go into each of these in more detail. First being safer crosswalks. This is essentially reducing the amount of distance it takes to travel across an intersection at a crosswalk. Secondly, improving safety with regard to pedestrian passages. This is kind of a design-specific element. It's actually changes to our Raleigh Street Design Manual. And then lastly, incentivizing pedestrian passages, so encouraging the construction of new pedestrian passages. The first component of this text change, crosswalk safety, is obviously intended to improve pedestrian safety and comfort by shortening that distance required to cross the street at intersections. As shown on the screen, you can see it really provides enhanced visibility for both the pedestrian and the vehicle operator. It's done by essentially specifying a narrower width at that intersection and creating a, essentially a bump out or bulb out, and would be triggered whenever the city, for example, redesigns a street or development occurs at the site of an intersection. Shown on the screen are two examples of what this would look like in practice. These images are not from the city of Raleigh, but just examples of what they would look like. Shown on the screen is a snippet from our code. You can see in the table, in subsection C, is the underlying text proposed to be incorporated, stipulating that shortened amount of distance. And the accompanying graphic on the top right-hand side of the screen kind of shows that 20-foot distance creating a bulb. The second component to this text change is really about pedestrian passage design, and these are changes that would be incorporated into our Raleigh Street Design Manual, essentially also intended to improve pedestrian safety. This comes into play when there's a pedestrian passage that would intersect an internal access drive. The Raleigh Street Design Manual would mandate that the passage take precedence in one of two ways. Either the material continues through the course of that intersection, or the height of the access drive actually has to come up to meet the height of the pedestrian passage. So shown on the screen, it's actually accomplishing both, but the height is risen, and there is a continuation of material. And then a second component to this section is really addressing situations where an internal driveway or accessway runs parallel to a pedestrian passage. In this instance, it would require the pedestrian passage to, again, either be raised, or if it is at the same grade, there would have to be some form of physical separation in terms of either bollards or landscaping, as shown in the image above. And lastly, the third component of this text change is really about incentivizing the creation of more pedestrian passages. A pedestrian passage, as shown in our UDO, is really a 10-foot paved area within a 20-foot public access easement. The UDO currently has an incentive, whereas it would permit a 50% larger block than would otherwise be allowed if it includes a pedestrian passage that bisects that block. The UDO regulates block perimeter primarily to create a more efficient, well-connected street network, but also with the understanding that a larger block increases drive time, has a negative impact on emergency services. This text change would actually expand the allowance to allow 100% larger block, given a pedestrian passage were to be implemented, with the understanding that over time, we would have more options in terms of mobility and pedestrian passages. So it's important also to note that this wouldn't take the place of any mapped street, as shown on the street plan, nor would a pedestrian passage be able to kind of stub to a street, or vice versa. Lastly, this text change has gone through a lot of advisory committee and board review, as shown on the screen. I believe there was feedback incorporated, and if there is any questions, I'm happy to take them. We also have representatives from Transportation here if we need to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now open this up to public comment. We'll start with those in support. If there are any members of the public who'd like to speak in support of this text change, please come to the podium. You have a total of 10 minutes to speak. And then seeing none, we can move to public comment for those in opposition. Those opposed to this text change have a total of 10 minutes to speak. Please come to the podium and introduce yourself. And seeing none, we can bring it back to the table. Any comments from Commissioners? Questions, feedback? Commissioner Otwell?
Thank you, Chair Miller. This is probably directed at Transportation Staff. I was curious how much uptake the city has had on the current 50% rule? What kind of pedestrian passages have been implemented based on current incentives?
Good morning. Bradley Kimbrel, Transportation Department. Want to make sure I understood the question. You were talking about the 50% reduction in the block perimeter?
Correct. That was a new policy a few years back, I believe, to incentivize pedestrian passages, and I was wondering what kind of uptake it had had.
We have seen an increase in being able to use that. I do think we're relatively still new in the latest version of the clean transportation text change, so I'm not sure how many overall projects. That said, it does create flexibility within the code, which is advantageous both for the staff implementation, but also applicants.
We started discussing policy like this back when I was on the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission over five years ago, and at times, there was some concern among the Transportation Staff that the block perimeter rule was critical for creating traffic grids in and out of downtown. And the concern was that allowing this rule could increase congestion and automobile traffic issues. What kind of trade-off are you expecting?
Make sure I'm following. So this is related to the current exemptions that are available in Chapter 8, correct?
With the proposed, with the proposed text change, the block perimeter would get larger in some situations, and the intention of the block perimeter rule is to create small blocks, so there's multiple routes for traffic for any one given situation. The concern would be with larger blocks, traffic would be concentrated on fewer corridors, and the, the small block perimeter is critical for keeping traffic congestion low going forward. And I was wondering if there's been an analysis or what the consideration is.
Absolutely. So that was considered and talked through internally. Today, there are a number of exemptions available in the code that speak to current conditions, whether they're adjacent property, whether they're environmental features, overall size of the block versus size and impact to a development parcel. So a number of exemptions exist today in the code. This text change, along with others, anticipated in the near, near term, allow for that flexibility, and that's really what we're trying to accomplish. We hear that feedback from applicants today. You know, site conditions make it, make it difficult, but overall, the intent within Chapter 8 is very clear. Increasing the number of connections, both for vehicles, but also other modes of transportation, ultimately serve everyone in the city. It also provides better connectivity for emergency services and the other city services. So connectivity is very important, and that's the, the basis of a lot of Chapter 8. And any ability for us to work with an applicant to help their development, make those opportunities occur, that's really what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Other questions? Thoughts, proposed changes to the text change? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I can go ahead and make a motion. I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated June 24th, 2025, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning text amendment with regards to TC 1124.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to our next item, TC 225, stormwater items to reflect state law. And we will now turn to Justin Booker, perhaps, or perhaps Sally Hoyt, for a presentation
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sally Hoyt. I'm with Raleigh Stormwater. Today, I'm going to be talking about TC 225, which contains two discrete items. The first item is one we have gotten requests from homeowners and home builders about. The second is a state, a change in state law that we don't really have much choice about. So in terms of this first item, this applies to one or two unit dwellings built on over an acre. So the total project is one building, a single-family or duplex on a property over an acre. And to explain this change, I need to give a brief, here's what our stormwater requirements are that apply to different-sized properties. So we consider we have two tracks that projects fall into. They either have to meet the exempt property requirements or the full stormwater requirements. And this lays out, the full stormwater requirements, you need to hire a designer. You typically have to build a stormwater control measure, like a pond or a buyer retention or something like that. For the exempt property requirements, many property owners can meet them by just staying under an impervious area threshold. And so they don't, unless they want to exceed those limits, they don't have to hire a designer, they don't have to build a stormwater control measure. So you might imagine, people want to be in the exempt property category. And this is the table. It's based on zoning, so depending on the zoning of the property, that dictates how much, what the impervious limit is. This is a chart that shows a variety of different, this was focused on housing types, but, so basically, our, our rules break into parcels, based on parcel size. And really, I show this to say, there's lots of different ways that either the exempt property or, or traditional or full stormwater requirements apply. We are only talking about this one, the one, one detached building, one or two-unit building on over one acre. So that's the only thing we're looking to change. And so prior to May 1st, 2023, those properties, regardless of the size of the parcel, got to meet, use those zoning limits. So it didn't matter if your parcel was 1.01 acres or three acres, you could, you know, do the zoning-based impervious limit. On May 1st, 2023, that changed, and basically, it said you could do up to 5% limit, and then you had to do the traditional or full stormwater requirements. So for many people, that meant they went from, say, in an R4, having a 38% impervious limit to having a de facto 5% impervious limit before they had to hire an engineer. So you can imagine that property owners who are, say, planning to build a house on a 1.1-acre lot now are, are in the situation where they would have to hire an engineer. So we, we heard, heard from a lot of folks, and we do have some, this was tied to the new nutrient rules that we, the new nutrient rules that we adopted May 1st, 2023, but there was some, there was some wiggle room in how those could be adopted. And so what we're looking, what we're proposing to do is shift slightly in how those are implemented. And so while they were previously based on solely on the parcel size, so if your parcel was 1.1 acres, you fell into the full stormwater requirement. The state rules actually allow us to say instead, if the limits of disturbance of the project are over an acre, then you would meet the full stormwater requirements. And if your limits of a disturbance were less than an acre, you could meet the exempt property requirements. So this will, for some property owners, if they're going, and this, again, only applies to when the total project is one building or one primary structure. So now, that person with 1.1 acres could meet those, if they kept their limit of disturbance small enough, could do their project, meeting those zoning limits. It's not unless, till they went to wanting to have a bigger project limits, that they would be put into the full stormwater requirements. So essentially, for many people, we'd be taking them back to the rules prior to 2023. In terms of the number of affected parcels, it's about 1,000, it's 937 parcels. Only about 100 of those are actually vacant. Most of them are, already have a one-unit dwelling on them, and so this would affect those property owners if they went to do an accessory dwelling, or a pool, or a driveway expansion, or something like that. So that, that is the first change. So that, that is the first change. The second change is to the built upon area definition. As I mentioned earlier, this is required by a 2024 session law. So what will be changing? So first of all, built upon area is essentially the same as impervious area. But I would say it's maybe where impervious area is more of a scientific definition. Built upon area is a, is a regulatory definition. And so it changed particularly three things, decks, artificial turf and gravel. So, uh, our existing rules say that decks would be 30 to 50% impervious if they're slatted decks. Per this law, they would be 0% impervious. Now, we, that does say if it's over a pervious surface, you can't put it over a patio and count it as pervious. The next change is to artificial turf. We currently allow, the, the current rules say that it could be anywhere from 0 to 100% impervious, depending on the infiltration below the surface. Per the law, if water drains through the backing of the turf and it's installed on a pervious surface, it counts as 0% impervious or 0% built upon area. And then the gravel definition also changes. So currently, we call any gravel stone aggregate material 100% impervious. We make exceptions when it's being used as like landscape mulch in a flower bed. But per the law, if it's a number 57 stone, which is defined by the professional organizations, ASTM and ASHTO. And if it's not used in a vehicle area, so if it's in a, it, it even goes so far to say the area not compacted by the wheels of the vehicle. So for example, the middle of a driveway could be considered pervious. The, the state law also says that applicants get the choice of whether they treat the area as pervious or impervious. Like if, so if it's gravel and they want to count the gravel as impervious because that's to their benefit, they could do that. We, we anticipate people would do that if it was an existing area that they would say, oh, the existing gravel is impervious. Therefore, I could build that much area. Uh, the other thing we're doing in these changes is there was two definitions in the UDO, one in Chapter 9 and one in Chapter 12. And so we're cleaning that up to just have Chapter 12 reference Chapter 9. There's a number of things that may remain unchanged. So currently, the pool water, soil, mulch, sand and vegetation are considered pervious area. And roofs, asphalt and concrete are considered impervious, and those things are not changing. This, because this is in state law from 2024, we are actually currently using these proposed definitions in our reviews to be compliant with that state law. Any questions about that material?
We may have some when we bring them back to the table. I think first we'll just open it up to public comment in case anyone from the public has questions or comments on this proposed text change. We'll start with those in support. Those in favor have a total of 10 minutes to speak. Please come up to the podium. And seeing none, we will move on to public comment. For those in opposition, those opposed also have a total of 10 minutes to speak. You can also please come to the podium. And seeing none, we can bring it back to the table for those questions. Thank you. Any questions from our Commissioners on this one? Thoughts, reflections, proposed changes? Yes. Commissioner Cogge.
So going to that text change that's required by state law that includes the definition of, of a pool being considered impervious. In that section, it also includes hot tubs and natural water bodies. Is the hot tubs also required by that state legislation?
So the pool is already considered pervious area. And natural water bodies are all, are already considered pervious. We added hot tub. That was not required by the state law. So what we are, what we have currently been, or in the past, we have been doing is if the hot tub was like part of a pool and was out, like an in-ground item, we would count it as the same as pool water. But if it was a standalone item with a cover, we counted it as impervious area. Yeah.
So why is it considered impervious now if, if it has a cover on it?
That is an item we could change.
I would encourage you to change it.
Yes, Commissioner Awel.
Thank you, Chair Miller. What, what magnitude of impact does the city expect if this change were to be enacted? And will the Stormwater Department have to adjust management in any other way to accommodate for that change?
Are, which change are you referring to? Both, both parts or?
Yes, both parts.
Yeah. So for the impervious area change, we have not counted, calculated the, the magnitude of that impact. It will, it is actually requiring us to work on some changes to our billing system and to how we track what has been permitted on the lot in perpetuity, because we can no longer just say, look at an aerial photograph and know whether the gravel is impervious or pervious. We have to go back to the, how it was permitted. So it's, that is introducing some additional documentation requirements as well as changes to our billing system, which will be implemented over the course. Those, the billing system changes will take a couple of years to go into effect because of the, the time delay in, when we calculate things versus when the billing happens. In terms of the, the, the change to the, the one, one or two unit dwellings, we, we've looked at the number of parcels it would affect. In theory, if every single one of these parcels redeveloped, it could be up to 600 acres of impervious area that got installed. However, given that so many of them are existing dwellings, we don't anticipate the impact to be that large.
Over time, you wouldn't expect to see much change in the flooding neighborhoods along stormwater. I, I know that's really hard to predict, so I apologize for throwing that at you.
Yeah. So we, we do know that there is an issue with, like infill redevelopment in terms of the impact on our drainage systems. And that is, um, so part of that is addressed by changes we made in 2024 that requires essentially a lot drainage plan. And that would now be required for these parcels over an acre. And then part of it is something that is essentially an impact that the city will be dealing with over time of upgrading storm drain pipes in streets and that sort of thing. That will happen slowly as part of our watershed planning process.
Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts from our Commissioners? Commissioner Awel, I'm sorry, Oh, Haver?
I would just assume that the Development Services Advisory Committee also had input on this. I know that we'd mentioned that on the previous case, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume that they were involved with these discussions as well.
Yes, the, the formal request for, we, we had heard from some homeowners. But then this was brought up by people who attend those meetings, and they ask for an update on it every month. So.
Thank you. Other comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Fox?
There's no time limit deadline associated with making these changes, is there?
No, there is not. The, our, because the built upon area is already in effect, the, the reason we would like to move this other part forward quickly is because there's at least one case in the variance process that would be affected by this.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, it sounds like we have one proposed change. That's for standalone hot tubs. To the extent the impervious surface calculations were not changed by state law, we'd like to change that back to the language that it was before this proposed text change. Is there any objection to that change? And seeing none, we can incorporate that into our motion. Would anybody like a motion, to make a motion on this? With that, including that text, that change?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated June 24th, 2025, contained in the agenda materials and to recommend approval of the zoning text change amendment with the one change noted in our meeting today for TC 225, Stormwater Items to Reflect State Law.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. I would also like to ask staff, those two presentations for the last two text changes were great and very helpful in understanding. Is there any way we could upload those to Board Doc so that we can have, and the public could have access to those as well? Thank you very much. Moving on to our next item. E3, Resoning Case Z82025 at 1011 Crosslink Road. This case is to change approximately 0.67 acres from R4 to R10. And we will now turn to Arthur Cashwell for a presentation from City Planning Staff.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Arthur Cashwell IV. I'm here to present rezoning case Z825 for the 0.67 acre site located at 1011 Crosslink Road. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from R dash, from R4 to R10. According to the future land use map, the area is designated low scale residential, which aligns with the intent of the R10 zoning district. The surrounding zoning pattern is predominantly R4 with adjacent parcels sharing the same low density residential designation. However, within 500 feet of the site, there are existing R6 and R10 conditional use districts, as well as office mixed use and neighborhood mixed use zoning within, within 1,000 feet. This reflects a transition to higher intensity and mixed use development nearby. This map represents a zoomed out aerial view of the proposed rezoning site, outlined in yellow at the intersection of Crown Crossing Lane and Crosslink Road. The site is directly adjacent to Biltmore Hills Park. Surrounding zoning includes a mix of low and moderate scale residential districts, as well as nearby mixed use districts, highlighting the area's evolving land use pattern. These images offer multiple street level perspectives of the proposed site. The top left image shows the view of the site when facing it from Crosslink Road. The top right image depicts the view when approaching the site from Crown Crossing Lane. The bottom left image highlights the property's frontage along Crosslink Road. The bottom right image displays the frontage along Crown Crossing Lane. Together, these views provide a comprehensive understanding of the site's visibility and orientation at the intersection. So this table summarizes the key differences between the existing R4 zoning and a proposed R10 zoning for the proposed 0.67 acre site. The minimum lot size, R4 requires larger lots, which is, which are 10,000 square feet, while R10 allows for more compact lots for 4,000 square feet, enabling more homes on the same land area. The maximum height for both zoning districts allow buildings up to 40 feet or three stories tall. Setbacks, as it relates to setbacks, R10 has reduced setback requirements, 10 foot for the front, 10 foot, 10 feet for the side, 20 feet for the rear, compared to R4, which is 20 feet for the front, 20 feet from the side, and 30 from the rear, allowing for more, for a more flexible site layout. The maximum residential units under R4, the site could accommodate up to four units. Under R10, it could accommodate up to 12 units. This shows how the proposed rezoning would allow for more compact and higher density residential pattern. The site demonstrates a mixed performance in terms of transportation access and energy related indicators. It has a walk score of 20, which falls below the city average of 31. This indicates limited pedestrian access to nearby amenities. However, the transit score is 41, which is notably higher than the city average of 30, reflecting strong access to public transit. The bike score is 34, which is slightly under the city average of 41, suggesting moderate bike infrastructure. And according to HUD data, the Low Transportation Cost Index is in a 70, is in the 70th percentile, meaning that the area is better than 70% of other areas in the country in terms of having low transportation cost. A higher percentile indicates more affordability, suggesting that households in this area typically spend less on transportation. Jobs proximity index is the 75th, is in the 75th percentile in indicating slightly lower transportation costs and better than average access to employment compared to the broader region. So this site is directly served by the Gold Rowley Route 5, Biltmore Hills and Route 711, Carolina Pines Connector. Route 5, Biltmore Hills runs every 15 minutes, connecting Idowell Village and Sanderford Road to the Gold Rowley Station downtown. Route 7L, Carolina Pines Connector, runs every 30 minutes, connecting Tryon Road to Southgate Plaza on Rock Quarry Road. Because the Gold Rowley bus stop lies on the site's frontage, development of the site through a tier two or three site plan would require improvements such as the shelter bench and other amenities outlined in the UDO. As it relates to affordability analysis, the rezoning proposal would add to the city's housing supply by allowing smaller minimum lot sizes and supporting a higher residential yield. While the site currently contains a single home built in 1940, it's likely considered naturally occurring affordable housing. No subsidized units have been, have been proposed as part of the request. The proposed R10 zoning permits a variety of housing types beyond detached houses, including townhomes and apartments. It also allows for smaller lot sizes well below the citywide average of 0.28 acres. Additionally, the site is within walking distance of transit with a Gold Rowley stop located approximately 200 feet away. Demographics and land use history. The site is located in a census block group with a high demographic index of 71%, which is nearly double the citywide average of 37%, reflecting a community with a significant concentration of low income residents and people of color. People of color represent 88% of the population in this area compared to 46% citywide. 54% of residents are low income, nearly twice the city average of 29%. While linguistic isolation is slightly lower than average, educational attainment is lower, with 16% of the population lacking a high school diploma compared to 8% citywide. The area has also experienced significant rental, rental cost increases, with the median gross rent rising by 43.8% since 2016, well above the city average of 25.5%. These indicators highlight the importance of equitable growth strategies and housing options that meet the needs of vulnerable populations. The proposed rezoning from R4 to R10 is consistent with the site's future land use map designation of low scale residential. This land use category typically supports a variety of housing types beyond traditional detached houses, including duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhouses and other missing middle housing options, generally on lots of approximately 1/6 of an acre or larger. Although R10 is classified as a medium density zoning district and is not explicitly listed within the typical range of low scale residential, which typically includes like R2 through R6, it can be considered consistent with the future land use map when applied with sensitivity to site design and contextual compatibility, especially in areas planned for frequent transit. So the site is located within both the frequent transit area and a transit emphasis corridor on the urban forum app. While the requested zoning district is residential and does not include a designated frontage, the proposal is consistent with the urban forum guidance. The comprehensive plan supports increased residential density and housing variety along key transit corridors, and its rezoning aligns with that intent by enabling more compact transit supportive development. The rezoning request is consistent with the 2030 comprehensive plan, particularly the vision theme of growing successful neighborhoods and communities. The site's proximity to Biltmore Hills, Hills Park, a planned greenway connection and an existing bus stop just 200 feet away supports the comprehensive, the comprehensive plan's goal of encouraging residential growth along frequent transit corridors. The site is located within a frequent transit area and along a transit emphasis corridor, both of which are targeted for increased housing capacity and variety aligning with the plan's intent to expand housing options near public amenities and transit infrastructure. These are the policies that are consistent with this rezoning. The rezoning aligns with city goals to increase housing supply and make better use of existing transit access. And then again, the site's location within a frequent transit area, transit emphasis corridor makes a suitable place to accommodate. corridor makes a suitable place to accommodate more housing types while supporting a development pattern that is compatible with public transportation. These are the inconsistent policies. This site does not meet the NFPA 1710 standards for the timely arrival of a full alarm assignment, which is the required eight-minute travel time is not achieved. There are no outstanding issues. Dates to remember, the next planning commission meeting will be, I guess that's not June 24th, it's going to be in August, and the deadline for action will be August 23rd.
Thank you very much. We will now open up public comment. We'll start with those in support. The applicant and those in favor have a total of 10 minutes to speak. Please come to the podium.
Good morning, Chair Miller and Commissioners. I'm Cindy Hosseini of Wacon Holdings. This is Ashkon Hosseini. We are Raleigh natives and Enlow High School graduates that have been doing development in downtown since around the 2010s. We mainly build single-family homes. We do renovations and ADUs. We were one of the first developers to do an ADU when that became permissible and have also been the first developer to do a double ADU. So we really specialize in detached housing. On the screen, you can see some of our developments. The largest picture of the two houses is an example of around 1,500 square feet small houses near Roberts Park. The House with the yellow door is a 1,000-square-foot tiny home off of Tarborough. The yellow and gray house is a double ADU in downtown Raleigh near Chavis Park. And then the white building with the blue door is another ADU that we built. These are just examples of our development work.
We've also done a couple of remodels in this Biltmore Hills area off of Hadley Drive and Newcombe in the past. However, the lot on Crosslink and Crown Crossing has a dilapidated house from the 1940s that doesn't really warrant remodeling. So being in the designated frequent transit area, it has a frequent transit development option that would allow for more dense housing. But currently, you can see it's a very long and slim property. So it's 2/3 of an acre, but it's 430 feet by 73 feet. And the frequent transit development option for items in the frequent transit area requires a minimum lot depth of 100 feet for R4. So we could not do the Crown Crossing frontage because it only has 73 feet of lot depth that way in R4. Similarly, R6 requires 80 feet of lot depth, and R10 requires 60 feet of lot depth. So with that move to R10, allowing a minimum of 60 feet of lot depth, because we have 73, allows us to do tiny homes and 13, a row of 13 tiny homes. So this would be example of that. Or nine single-family homes. And nine tiny homes, as defined by the city, is 1,200 square feet or less, which is consistent with other homes in the Biltmore Hills neighborhood. For example, the two remodels we did were around 1,000 square feet. This is just a current street view of the home. We did have a neighborhood meeting that was well-attended with 22 neighbors. I believe they'll speak next. The main concerns, which I think they'll touch on and I'll try to talk about how we've tried to address them, mainly fell under transportation. So increased traffic, parking and sidewalk. So we did reach out to the city liaison. There are no current plans for a light at that intersection of Crosslink and Crown Crossing. And for a development of this small size, it would be kind of cross-prohibitive for us to fund. Parking, we would plan for off-street parking, so with the lot depth of 73 feet, would allow for driveways and parking. But there was concern about street parking still being allowed, and the transportation of city representative confirmed that parking would still be allowed on the street. And sidewalks for the frontage facing Crown Crossing would be part of the subdivision requirement in the UDO, so that would connect the Crown Crossing frontage to the bus stop. But there are no sidewalks that continue to Biltmore Hills on the park side. And lastly, there were some stormwater concerns. Our plan is just to follow the UDO guidance. And then there was concerns of the design of homes matching existing homes on that Crown Crossing and the price point of tiny homes being, affecting the larger homes across the streets' value. And that's all we have from the development.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak in support of this project? Then seeing none, we can open up public comment for those in opposition. Those opposed to this case have a total of 10 minutes to speak. Please come to the podium and introduce yourself.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Elizabeth Holland, and I reside 800 Crown Crossing Lane at the bottom of the hill from Crosslink across from Biltmore Park. I am here today with several members of our community, both members on Crosslink but on Crown Crossing Lane. So we are a neighborhood concern. Some of the things that Mr. We has, has said today, we certainly have already addressed because we have had a meeting and we have had an ongoing dialogue with them, with our concerns. The things that we'd like to reiterate today is just to, to say that the quality of the homes on Crosslink is going to be, is much different than what is proposed that's coming in. So our concern is value for our homes that have been, some of us have been there up to 20 years. And so we are concerned that, that the, that the appearance will be maintained. We're long-term owners in the area. And the bigger part of that concern is safety. There is a, a unit from KB that's backing up already to Crown Link that is going to affect our traffic on our current street. We are not sure how, the number of that, of that project, but we certainly have already been told that it's going to affect the income of traffic coming down our street on Crosslink. We're currently already having major problems with traffic, especially during the spring and summer times when the park, Biltmore Park is very active. And on-street parking is a big part of our concern and the number of traffic that comes back and forth. We have in the past already requested for speed bumps that was denied. They told us that they did a study that did not support speed bumps. Our concern is with this coming up, we just cannot even vision what the traffic is going to be like. We do have disabled children on the, on the street, grandchildren and all, who attempt to play in the street or around the area, and that's a big part of our concern. So what we did was we met and we list bullets, and I want to give you that quickly. Our safety concerns, larger vehicles that will be coming in and out of our street, as well as the number of homes of, I'm sorry, of vehicles that will be allowed to park on the street rather than in these new homes that are coming in. So we've, we've talked with Mr. We about that, and I believe he assured us that there would, he would be trying to do off-street parking. And I'm not sure where that is right now. Also, we are, traffic control is a big part of our concern, but also the appearance of what our, what our community will look like when these tiny homes come in. Whether it's the 5 to 10 or 13, it certainly will change what our, what our community will look like. Most of our homes are at least 22, 2400 square feet homes, very large homes. And so this is the biggest part of our concerns. We, we just want it to be on record that we, we want the quality of our community, not just our street, to maintain, be maintained. We recognize and respect the need for development, and we support that. Our concern is to make sure that the value of our homes don't go down, but actually will go up, which is, I'm sure, your concerns all over Raleigh. I think that's it that we have today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. I am Tracy Hip, and I live on Crown Crossing Lane. I've lived there for 22 years, and I am in agreement with everything that's been said. I believe we did attempt to submit our information to you. I do not know if you have received that information or not. If not, we're more than happy to get that to you for review. I did note that the, in the city presentation, they gave a visual of the street of Crown Crossing Lane, but it did not show from the point of Crosslink, as the city has put a divider on Crosslink. And part of the safety concern is that because the divider sticks out so far, that all of the city large trucks and equipment, the large vehicles that go down the street have to pull out so far to get onto the street. And with parking on that side of the street, we feel like that it will be a safety issue for those cars and for anybody turning on to the street. I also think that it's important to understand that our community is not just the eight or nine houses on Crown Crossing Lane. It is also the park, which is directly across from our homes. And I say that because we've continuously asked for speed bumps on Crown Crossing because of the amount of traffic that goes up and down the road. And it's not just traffic. We're talking about speeding traffic, where cars are actually racing each other down the street. That is a safety issue. We've seen people almost hit backing out of my driveway. It's a safety issue because people are speeding up the street. I also want to note that speed bumps are already in place in front of the park itself. So if you consider Crown Crossing an entrance to the park, which it has now become, whereas Fitzgerald, I believe, used to be the entrance. So Crown Crossing goes all the way down Crown Crossing, through the park and out the other side. Well, there are speed bumps over in front of the park. So if we're considering, considered a part of the park, there needs to be speed bumps on Crown Crossing Lane to slow that traffic down. I don't want to see somebody get hurt right there. We're also asking that the sidewalk here is all the way down to the park because the amount of foot traffic over the last 20 years has significantly increased. And people tend to walk either in the road or on the side of the park where there is no sidewalk. And so the danger of that, and again, we've seen people almost hit walking on that side of the road, so we'd like that, for that to be a consideration as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak in opposition of this project? If so, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Al Perry, here representing my mother and my recently deceased father, who have lived there about 30 years and helped to develop the street, the larger homes that were discussed previously. I think that someone sent some photographs over. If not, they will send them to you. And that was an attempt to show the look and feel of the homes that have been described, these, where families have been for 20, or I think my parents have been about 30 years, what those look like and how someone was able to use A1, excuse, AI, excuse me, use AI to, to incorporate some of those elements of those homes onto what might be built across the street. And I think that when people are talking about trying to, to preserve the look and feel, it would seem not a difficult task to incorporate design elements from the homes across the street onto what is built, proposed to be built. So I would ask that you take a look at that and incorporate the elements of brick and others, elements, design elements, so that even if those homes are smaller, they still have a look and feel that is consistent with the homes across the street. As my parents' neighbors have said, they support development and growth. They would just like it to be, you know, consistent as much as possible with what is already present. And that's what we ask you to consider. I think that, I think the ask with regard to the speed bumps and the sidewalks, I think that the neighborhood has been reasonable in their ask. And I think that, you know, they, they are people who are generally, you know, sort of obstinate and resistant to change. They're, they're trying to work with the developers who've been, seemingly to me, have been responsive as well. So I think that you have a situation where the developer and the neighbors are trying to, to work together to, to foster the development the city wants and needs, but just ask for, they may, I believe, reasonable ask of this commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak in opposition to this project? Please come to the podium or raise your hand if you need an extra minute. Then seeing none, we can bring it back to the table for questions from our Commissioners. Commissioner Neptun.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to start by thanking all of the residents of the neighborhood for joining us this morning. I mean, just taking time out of your day to be with us to discuss this potential development and investment in your community, I suspect means a great deal to everybody on the commission. I wanted to just be clear in acknowledging at least what I believe I heard as far as the issues kind of that are top of mind for the community that's been raised. Number one, it seemed like it was consistently mentioned, just traffic, speeding, and frankly, it sounds like that has been an ongoing issue prior to this. You know, it sounds like, you know, residents have observed this, again, sort of reckless driving, we'll put it that way. And I'll just acknowledge, you know, I've been living in southeast Raleigh for many years, and I mean, I have seen it too. And so I just wonder, that to me is a, though it's related to this conversation, I wonder, is there a, and I guess this is a question maybe back to staff. Is there some way in which we can encourage or help facilitate some connection to be made between these residents and, let's say, Raleigh Transportation to discuss some potential solutions to address? I mean, I mean, it sounds, in other words, I mean, it sounds like they've gone to Raleigh Transportation before about speed bumps, and, and it sounds like for some reason, you know, and I'll, I'll acknowledge, you know, I formerly served on the, you know, Raleigh Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission, so I'm all about some sidewalks and, you know, slowing down traffic in our community. But I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, is there some way we can encourage or help facilitate between these residents here and our colleagues in Raleigh Transportation, some connection to address these very real concerns around speeding and, and traffic in the neighborhood? That's number one. Number two, the other issue I feel like I heard consistently mentioned was with regard to design, the appearance, right? I mean, you've got people who've been living here for generations, frankly, is what I'm hearing, and I think what I'm bearing witness to. And, you know, no one here is opposed to investment in the neighborhood, but it's simply a matter of can we just affirm that we're all on the same page between the residents and our development community, that the investment here in tiny homes will maintain, right? The look, the feel, the character of what people have been maintaining for generations. I think that's what I'm hearing. And so I just want to acknowledge that, I think, that top-of-mind sort of issue. And maybe the developer could speak to that, like their intention with that. And I, and maybe this is a question back for the developer. If I heard it and saw it correctly in the presentation, there were nine tiny homes being presented in the presentation. Is that correct? Or, there are 13? 13, 13. Thank you for that, to my colleagues on the commission for clarifying 13. And then I wanted to quickly clarify the size of those tiny homes. I mean, I think there was mention the square footage. Maybe somebody could share that with me here in real time? That wraps up the comment.
Okay, yeah, sure. So it sounds like we've got a couple of questions. The first one, would the applicant like to respond to the comments about the design elements and fitting in with the surrounding neighborhood?
And to answer real quickly about the tiny homes, 1,200 square feet is the maximum square footage.
square footage defined by the City of Raleigh as a tiny home. And then nine could fit as single-family homes. That would exceed the 1,200 square foot maximum.
That's where I got the nine from.
So we have two options under the R10.
Okay, so it could be nine or 13.
Nine regular-sized homes or 13 tiny homes, which would be a maximum of 1,200 square feet.
And then maximum of 1,200 square feet for those tiny homes?
Exactly.
Wow. Well, I'll just acknowledge, as somebody who has lived in an ADU since it was made legal in the, the City of Raleigh, that ADU is no longer larger than like 800 square feet, and I have loved it. So I could imagine moving into a tiny home myself one day, you know, hopefully, well, you know, if I have a family, I have to move out. But anyways, that's not the point. Thank you for that clarification. And then as far as the design and the look and the appearance and the feel of the, of the homes, could the developer maybe speak to that?
Sure, absolutely. Ashkan Josani, thank you for the opportunity to discuss our case with you guys. As far as the, the look and feel of the homes, I mean, we, we kind of gave these examples. We build more of a contemporary style, so something, you know, upper right would be, I think Cindy mentioned 1,500, but they're actually 1,800, the, the two that are upper right-hand side of the screen. So it would probably be a more contemporary look than the houses across the street. So, you know, we, we showed examples of, of what we build. We wanted to be upfront, you know, we don't want to promise that, you know, the houses were going to look like the ones across the street and then come in and do something different. So, you know, the houses across the street are beautiful, they're really large. I think there, some of them are 3,000 square feet maybe, with two-car garages. We just, what, what we're proposing to build just isn't anywhere close to that size. So...
Thank you. No, we're going to hold this at the table for, to, to try to finish getting to the bottom of addressing these design, first the design elements and then the transportation issues. Do you have a comment about the design elements, Commissioner Fox?
I do. May I just apologize if you mentioned it. Are they for-sale units or rental?
For-sale.
For-sale. Okay, so I'm assuming people who would buy a home would maintain their home because they own it. Okay, that helps me a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments about conditions or, or thoughts related to design elements? Yes, Commissioner Bennett, Vice President Bennett, excuse me.
Thank you. Would you consider some conditions to make the, the homes that you are building more consistent with the homes that are, they are not necessarily in size, but in terms of the materials, so they would look similar to the homes that are already there? So there's more of a blending in with what's there?
And perhaps Commissioner O'Haver, could you share some of the design elements with respective facades that we've requested in the past?
Calling me out. I do, I, I do understand the, the concern about the design elements and the proximity. I've mentioned before, even in my own neighborhood in Oakwood, what makes some of those neighborhoods so unique and so interesting is the difference, the many different styles of housing within the neighborhood. I do think there's a way to blend some type of condition with the materials, but I certainly understand the applicant's position, that they don't want to necessarily mimic what's across the street. And I'm not sure that's a negative thing for neighborhoods and interesting neighborhoods. So that's, that's my take as far as materials. I will say on a lot of these...
Just to be consistent with past rezoning cases, we've often had conditions, and I thought you'd been the one to typically ask for those. That's why I teed you up, but with respect to EPIS or vinyl or some of these conditions.
Well, we, we did talk about hardy materials. It's hard to legislate design and consistency, and how does staff determine what's consistent and not consistent. Super hard to define that. But I think there's a, an ability to talk about hardy materials, hardy plank. Again, on a lot of these contemporary homes, a lot of those materials weather very badly, quite honestly. I'm not exactly sure what that material is, I'm not an architect, but that, that certainly is not very attractive, and I wouldn't want to live next to it either. So I think there is an opportunity for the applicant to go back and try to find a blend of party materials that are going to be similar but not the same as what's across the street. I could support that. I'm not sure if my fellow commissioners could, but that's my opinion on that.
Thank you. Vice President Bennett, did you have a follow-up to your comment?
I hear what you're saying, Commissioner O'Haver, and there certainly, I don't have an opposition to diversity in appearance in a neighborhood, but this is a long-established community, and they're asking that what comes in is fairly consistent with what is there, which is not unlike what we hear from other communities in other parts of Raleigh. So it would seem to me if these developers, which seem to be doing very good work, are coming into a community, you'd want to be a good neighbor and be a part of the community and not look like this is one community and this is another community. We want to be a holistic community, it seems to me, since this is a well-established community. So if there are conditions that could be included to make the homes being proposed more consistent in look and feel with what is there, then I would support that, just like I support it when we see it coming in from other communities throughout Raleigh.
Commissioner Fox?
I'm always, I acknowledge the need for people to be able to anticipate what's coming near them or next to them. I'm always hesitant to regulate materials. Reason being, if you regulate materials, and these are for-sale units, I buy a unit, and four years from now, I want to change the materials on the facade, I want to renovate my house, I could potentially have a zoning violation if zoning is tied to materials. So there may be other ways to do that, to articulate and signal to folks what you're doing, that might have more to do with massing height, setback, et cetera, or much like Commissioner O'Haver mentioned, not allowing certain types of materials that are often found to be offensive for whatever reason, and that includes things like vinyl siding. However, I've also seen vinyl siding homes, which are just perfectly lovely. So that's, it's not a personal request to remove certain materials. But again, I'm, I'm very hesitant to tie materials to zoning in a, in a zoning case. And that's why.
Thank you. Commissioner Mekaya?
Oh, I thought I was invisible for a second. I'm going to be candid. I do not like, personally, I live in southeast Raleigh, I don't live far from cross-link. I do not like driving around southeast Raleigh and seeing houses that starkly look different. I think these square homes are ugly, and that's just being real. I see a lot of communities where they look like well-attended, small-family-home communities that have been there for a while, and then we have these monstrosities, and I'm not really sure where they come from or what area of the country we're gleaning this sort of design from. I think that it breaks up the character of the community. How much are these homes going to go for?
It, it depends on if we go tiny home or single-family, but I mean, we're probably two years out before anything gets built on it. But if it was today, let's say like a 1,200 square foot tiny home, we'd probably go for 350 to 375.
So $350,000 for a tiny home in a affordable, naturally occurring, affordable community? And how much would it go if they were regular-sized homes?
I, it would just depend on the square footage.
Give me a round.
Probably low 400s, 450.
450, so $100,000 more for a regular-sized home at least. So that is also going to impact the affordability of that community, right? Like, we understand that that is the, the also the case, and this is a naturally occurring community, and how many homes are in this community?
In, in the surrounding neighborhood?
Yeah.
I mean, there, there's a lot, it's, it's a lot of established homes. The established homes, all of them are 1,000 to 1,200 square feet, and the renovated ones go for around 300 plus or minus, so...
Give me a ballpark of how many homes are in the community.
I'm not sure, probably 200, 300.
200 homes. So 200 homes in a naturally occurring, affordable community, and we're thinking about bringing between 13 to nine regular, nine regular-sized or 13 tiny homes that cost more than my regular-sized house into this community, that also will not be supplying sidewalks to further enhance or imbue with the community, especially going toward Biltmore Hills, but connecting the transit, which is cool, but not giving extra sidewalks anywhere else, and seeming very, very set on these being the designs of the homes. Did you all research the community when you came in and looked at how the homes looked and decided that you didn't care what those homes looked like, that this is what you're going to do because this is what you're good at?
No, that, that's not the case. The, the homes across the street are only about 25 or 30 years old, so that's not, those are not representative of the size or the look of Biltmore Hills. We've renovated a few houses in Biltmore Hills and kept the aesthetics of the homes. It's, Biltmore Hills has brick homes, they have siding homes, no vinyl siding. And I want to add that all the houses we build are with hardy plank siding, we don't use vinyl siding. And, yes, it's very comparable to the houses that are in the neighborhood in terms of...
So the homes that you renovated in Biltmore Hills, did you turn them into this, where you kept them with their character?
Kept them with their character.
So you have the ability to build homes that look nice and are newer in the community that keeps the character of the community of the homes around it, but you're choosing not to?
Those were renovations and not new builds.
Okay, but you have the ability to build homes in a community that looks like and keeps the character of the homes in the community, but you're choosing not to?
We're, we're saying that to add, if, if we're building tiny homes and the neighbors want us to build, have brick on, on the houses, you're just increasing costs. So it's, there's a, there's a trade-off. We're not, we're not opposed to building nice stuff. We've never done anything that's, you know, a renovation or a new build that we use vinyl siding on. We use good materials on our builds, but to require us to do brick and two-car garages, then it's no longer a $350,000 house.
Well, nobody's saying the garage, right? Because we're also saying that there's going to be parking on site, but that doesn't mean that when you have visitors, there's not going to add extra parking to the street. These homes will add more traffic to the community, which is a concern for the community. So they're trade-offs to everyone. They're trade-offs to the current residents, potentially losing their naturally occurring affordability of over 200 homes, which to me is more important than building new homes of 13 or nine new homes that would then simply possibly disrupt 200 homes and their affordability is one. And then two, my issue also is if this council or commission in the past has been a little more, you know, strict or staunch about making sure that the houses fit the community, that needs to happen in this project also. And I agree with the other council person, Council Neptune and Bennett, who said, you know, if you're driving down the community, you want it to seem cohesive and inclusive. You want it to seem like that's not one community and this is another. So to me, trade-offs go both ways. I don't necessarily sit and feel bad for developers who have to give some trade-offs, especially if it means that the residents are trading off also and needing speed bumps. So I'm sure once these homes go in, that process of you all getting speed bumps might get real easier because of who's might, who's going to probably be moving into your neighborhood. And this happens across Raleigh where we need a light, we don't get a light until the neighborhood starts gentrifying, and now we have streetlights, or now we have stoplights, or now we have speed bumps, when we've been asking for it for years. So my thought is, yes, you've been talking to the community, and you can talk nicely to residents and still not give them what they want. So in my mind, I'm not for this project, because yes, it's adding a couple due points of affordability, but it also potentially risks naturally occurring affordability in the future. They do not meet the character of the neighborhood that they're going to be built in. And even if the residents are asking for it and there's a capability of doing it, it seems like there is no, no desire to do it. And I think that it also should be a part where, as we're talking to city transportation and maybe working with developers, to also figure out how if we're bringing in new development that'll increase traffic, we can make the streets safer by having more speed bumps and listening to what the residents are saying.
Thank you.
Those are my two points.
Thank you, Commissioner Mekaya. I'd like to bring it back to conditions related to this rezoning case and try to narrow in, on some of those. It sounds like, again, the two items are design appearance and transportation issues. We'll bring up staff in just a moment to address transportation. On design, if we're being consistent with what we have done in other cases historically in the past, the conditions have typically been related to building materials, specifically related to vinyl and EPIS. It sounds like that's not a material that you use anyway. Would you be open to including a condition related to those building materials?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Fox, another comment on that?
I was going to offer some other thoughts about neighborhood character. It's likely less materials and its built form, so the shape of the building, right? But there are other parts of a development which make it feel like part of a community, and that has to do with things like street trees, landscape, et cetera. So I did hear correctly, just correct me if I'm wrong, that there, there would be a sidewalk required. Okay, so you would build a sidewalk on your side?
Along, yes, along Crown Crossing in front of our development.
It just wouldn't extend all the way to the park because we don't own the property to the park.
Okay, so on your frontage, you would build. And then along with that, I'm assuming, are there requirements for street trees?
Yes, the subdivision process, it requires street trees and sidewalks as part of that process.
Okay, so, so sometimes we've seen conditions offered, looking at the, the nature and type of plantings included in, in the streetscape. And sometimes I, I find that helps make new developments feel a little bit more seamless, a little bit more integrated in a community. In a way that's not regulating material, that's going to increase the cost, which is counter to the point of creating a home that's tiny in the first place. So I'm acknowledging that issue. So it's just, it's just another set of conditions to contemplate.
What, any conditions in particular related to the plantings? Get a little more guidance on what might be helpful there?
Having not done a tree survey of the street there, just recommending the selection of, the selection of species that are congruous with other ones, and the streetscapes of adjacent streets and/or crossing, crossing itself.
Is that a condition on design?
Excuse me, is that something the applicant would be open to?
Yes, and I believe the, when, when going through the subdivision process, when the, when they require the street trees, I think they give you a few options as to what those trees are. I don't think you can put in whatever you want. I believe that's the, the process.
Can I make a recommendation possibly around design?
Can I just remind the commission that conditions must be offered voluntarily by the applicant?
Very gladly. The hardy materials just were already actually mentioned first by the applicant, that that's what they typically use. So that was why, that seemed appropriate.
Can I ask about design? Is there any possible way?
You may, but Commissioner Neptune, raise his hand first. Yes, Commissioner Neptune.
And it's, it's just a brief comment and observation with regard to sidewalk infrastructure and the potential for, let's say, speed mitigation in the neighborhood. As it happens, the City of Raleigh right now, and our friends with Raleigh Transportation, city staff, Transportation, we are in the middle of adopting, drafting and adopting a new sidewalk and bike plan for the city, a new active mobility plan for the city. And so I wonder if this could be a good opportunity for the residents to connect with colleagues on city staff to discuss sidewalk connectivity in the neighborhood, because that, to me, is like a whole nother, certainly a very relevant and very important issue with regard to this rezoning. And I, I've, I've been churning on just how we can maybe encourage, again, connection between our residents and our colleagues on city staff with regard to that transportation issue. And it just so happens, I mean, we're literally in the middle of drafting a new sidewalk and bike plan for the city, so it could be this, it's an opportune time to make that connection.
That's a great point. And before we move to transportation, though, and one last item on the design?
Is there a way that you all would consider a condition of making these homes look and fit more with the character of the homes that are already there? Not necessarily speaking about brick, but I'm talking about, or materials, but I'm speaking on the design of the homes.
Yeah, we, we could take a look at it. I mean, we do, we've done A-frame roofs, we've done shed roofs, we've, we've done it all. You can see kind of the examples, so we're not opposed to that.
Thank you very much. Yes, Commissioner Cochran is on the floor.
So as an architect...
So as an architect, I'd like to say that I live around the corner from the two homes that everyone seems to find very offensive, and I considered buying one of them because I think it's actually beautiful. And I'd also like to say that a lot of times, these neighborhoods have this beautiful character to them, and we fall in love with it, and we live there for a long time. And when it's built, we're using the trendy materials of the day. There's a specific color brick here. It's actually a mixture of vinyl siding and brick in this neighborhood. So before we outlaw vinyl siding, we might want to consider that. Materials affect the affordability of the house. So there's a way to incorporate brick thoughtfully without breaking your budget. There's also a way to reference existing geometry without it being cartoonish. So I do think that you've demonstrated that you're thoughtful, you've got a variety in your design. I would say all of the pictures you're showing us right now are a different approach. So instead of regulating and strong-holding and trying to make these decisions right now, let's think about who, who might need to buy a house in Raleigh and what's affordable to them, and what would maybe make this a multi-generational neighborhood, and some things like that. So I just want to encourage us to come at it with a, how much housing can this neighborhood support? Because as the planning commission, that really is our purview. And then be good faith partners to work together to find something. It sounds like everyone's already talking very openly about this, and all ideas are on the table. And I do appreciate everyone coming in and bringing, you know, their history and their ideas. But I just want to take a step back and say, if we left this undeveloped, would that benefit the community? Probably not. But we do want smart development there. Do we think going to this other zoning would provide that smart development? I think that's kind of the focus of today. But I do want to say, I think that's actually a beautiful house.
Yeah, thank you very much. We're gonna move to transportation. Is this related to design as well?
Yes, very briefly.
One last item on design, we have several.
And it's just, it's a note with regard to the developer in this particular context being willing to, at least from what I can tell, the developer has demonstrated a willingness and openness and a good faith effort to be engaged in conversation with the community, with the residents, and appears, from what I'm hearing, has expressed interest in moving forward in a way where they continue to be, right, in good faith, in conversation with the community about investing, right, in the neighborhood in a way that not only maintains, but hopefully expands on the value of what generations of our residents before have been maintaining. So just want to acknowledge that and express my appreciation for that.
Thank you very much. Moving on to transportation, could we have staff come up and address some of the transportation issues that have been discussed? Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. Carter Robertson with transportation. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Neptune, for uplifting our active mobility plan. I'm working on that. We're actually in our final stretch of public engagement, so we'd like to connect with the community on that as we can. In regards to making those connections with our residents, I'll make myself available after this meeting to talk about our plan and this case in particular. So I'll be available to kind of touch on some of the specific concerns that were mentioned. I'm not familiar when the request for speed bumps was submitted. That's something I could follow up with our neighborhood traffic management program about, maybe see why that was denied, and if that's something we could revisit now that circumstances are changing. Also willing to work with the applicant. In the past, we've seen conditions related to traffic calming measures that are offered voluntarily, of course. We do have some speed data, not for Crown Crossing, but for Crosslink in particular, that's suggesting that we do see speeds that are pretty consistently higher than the speed limit there. So I can follow up with our neighborhood traffic program, our Vision Zero team, maybe partners at Raleigh PD, to see if there's a solution we could get to there. There was a lot of concerns. Is there anything else specifically you'd like me to touch on?
Sure. Could you review with us whether this project required a traffic impact analysis?
No, it did not. So with every case, we get the entitlements from what's existing and what's proposed. We put them into our model, and it generates a maximum trip generating scenario. For this case, it anticipates this development would generate about seventy daily trips, four in the AM hours and five in the PM peak hours. So those do not generate our TIA thresholds.
Sorry, I didn't miss that part. In the peak hours, how many was it?
Five in the PM and four in the AM.
Okay.
And so that's seven to nine in the morning, and I think four to six in the evening.
Thank you very much. And could you confirm that on the site plan that the neighbor, or that the applicant would be required to put in a sidewalk on these parcels?
Yeah, that's correct. If this is a subdivision or a tier-three site plan, this, what's the street name? Crown Crossing most closely resembles a neighborhood local, and so that includes curb and gutter, the planting area with the street trees, and then a six-foot sidewalk. So that would be required at site plan.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes. Vice Chair Bennett.
Thank you. What would, what would it take to get the city to extend the sidewalk from the piece that the applicant would need to build to the park, since that's not their property and they wouldn't be responsible for that piece? What would the neighborhood have to do? Is there a process to request that missing piece?
All right, so we used to have a petition program where people could submit their requests. We've moved away from that now. We're really trying to capture that with our active mobility plan. And so we're putting in segments that have been requested in the past and other connections that we think would be important, and we're going to score those. And once that plan is adopted, we'll move forward kind of with that prioritized list. So it would depend, we could see about getting that on the list, but it would also depend on how it ranks against the others.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Commissioner Sheller.
So I understand you are not able to talk about the specifics for the speed bumps for this particular street, but I'd be curious to hear what the criteria are, because it sounds like they may be, may need some rethinking. And I just, while I've got the mic, I'll just add as a side note that the solution here really is for the city to take Vision Zero more seriously and have things like automated enforcement all over the place, like other cities have done very successfully. But that's not my question, no. Yeah.
Yeah, I could look into the specifics when I follow up with our neighborhood traffic program. I believe it's mainly about traffic volume and the speeds that we're seeing on that street, and also the design. That's oriented more towards the neighborhood, local areas, which this one is. So I can follow and provide some more information to the specifics.
Thank you very much. It sounds like the applicant is willing to consider some additional time to make potential, to review making conditions, additional conditions to this case, excuse me. Are there, is there anything else for the applicant to consider when they're evaluating that before we move on to the next item? Commissioner Otwell.
Thank you, Chair Miller. I'd like to state just bluntly, I don't think the city has business regulating what people build their houses to look like. Within certain parameters of how you address the street and what size, the color and the shape, I think that we're not carry. And I like our diversity of houses. The tiny houses that are being proposed here are potentially less expensive than the houses they're going in across the street from. If we deny this zoning and it stays in R4, what you're gonna get is not an affordable piece of construction. This is, these are some of the least expensive developments that we've seen proposed here at this table. And we talk a lot about affordability, and this is the best option for affordability along this road. And finally, I'd like to say, these are exactly the kind of developers that we want to encourage in the city. Small, local, involved, they're listening. This is not Lamar, this is not Kane. These are the people that build our city. And I'm ready to vote for this, give it a positive recommendation at any time.
Thank you very much. I personally am inclined to agree with you. I'm also open to hearing about what the applicant's willing to consider for additional conditions.
Commissioner Omakai. But the... I've looked a few times.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm also gonna, I'll turn to you next. And I'm concerned when we start adding too many conditions on things like the, either building materials or providing traffic calming measures to the street, other items that are absolutely gonna increase the cost of these units. And again, these are affordable units, specifically those missing middle housing types that we desperately need in the city and the frequent transit development in FTDO area right next to transit. And this is exactly what our overall comprehensive plan has been geared at trying to create for the city. So while I do elevate the conversations here and the applicant seems open to considering conditions, I do separately personally agree with Commissioner Otwell. So yes, Commissioner Omakai.
Well, I have two parts. One, to the person who just spoke from the city, he mentioned that he understands that the residents have been asking for traffic speed bumps and things like that, but now the conditions have changed. And I'm wondering what conditions have changed? If he can expound on the changed conditions that now may necessitate speed bumps when they were asking for it for a while. And the other thing is, I get that I may not agree with some of the things that the councillors are saying, or may say now, but said different in the past, but that does not mean that my voice shouldn't be heard on this council, I should be ignored when my hand is raised, and people should be picked over me when I'm clearly showing that my hand is up before theirs. But before we get to that, if you can explain to me what the new conditions are that are currently happening that were not in place when they were asking for speed bumps, but now may necessitate more traffic regulation?
Well, and if I could, prior to our colleague from city staff, was it Carter?
Yes, sir.
What's your last name?
Robertson.
Robertson, Mr. Robertson, thank you. Just briefly, I wanted to acknowledge with Commissioner Omakai, you know, I'm coming on to planning after six years with Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission. And I only mention that because over that six years, the BPAC, in conversation with city staff, reviewed this, we'll say, legacy approach, the sort of neighborhood petitions for sidewalks, traffic management programs with speed bumps. I just, I mention all this to say that, just to put it briefly, effectively, these programs, and specifically the neighborhood petition program, was found to be onerous for residents to participate in, ineffective, effectively, you know, effectively. And so I think over the years, staff has been trying to identify new measures to make these investments in sidewalks and improve connectivity in our neighborhoods that are more sort of quickly reflective of our neighborhood growth. That's number one. And then number two, with regard to like speed bumps, and I guess those like changing conditions, I think, and again, I mean, I'll certainly defer to staff to speak, I just want to speak to this, but I want to acknowledge that I think the BPAC as a commission has been in conversation with staff about this over the years. And I know we've adopted Vision Zero policies, and you know, we, as a city, have been making investments in staff to improve, you know, traffic mitigation in our neighborhoods and in our city over the years. And it's kind of based on evolving best practices, you know, as transportation professionals. But I just wanted to mention that conversation that's been ongoing from a BPAC standpoint, but our colleague on...
And I think that's fair, but I also think that we've seen in communities, which communities are prioritized for those traffic impacts, for those speed bumps that's asked for it and which communities are not, which communities get stoplights and street signs that have asked for it and which communities don't, until conditions change, AKA gentrification. And now, conditions are different, so we can look into that now. And I, Raleigh is not a perfect city, no city is, but pretending like we don't have these issues, or they're just boilerpoint, you know, nuts and bolts issues, when there's deeper and bigger systemic issues to that, is unfair to the residents that are here saying what they're saying and been ignored for a long time, and now new conditions are coming in that may allow those things that they've been asking for for years. And I don't think that it's just because Raleigh is going through its processes. And I'm just, I'm here to keep it real.
Thank you. Those are all fantastic comments. I will note, we have four more rezoning cases and several items that if they're not here heard today, they will get pushed until the fall. We have many members of the public that are in attendance for those cases as well. So I'm trying to be respectful of everybody in the room and the agenda and the other cases here. Also, there's a lot of interest in this case. There's been a lot of hands flying up. I'm doing my very best to figure out in what order those hands are going up, if I have ever missed that, my mistake. That's why we moved my position down here, so I wouldn't have to look left and right. But from this vantage point, I can often see things in the order that it's harder at other viewpoints on the table. So with that, I believe there's a quick question for transportation, and then we're gonna, applicants ready to consider additional conditions, and we're gonna move on. Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify really quick, I'm not familiar with what went into that previous analysis or when it occurred. And mainly what I was referring to with changing conditions is this new development and potentially seventy more vehicles accessing that road. So, yeah, basically.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, we have got to move on to the other items at the table. This item is not being voted on today, so there is additional time to have conversations. If you'd like to send additional emails to the planning commission, to our listserv, those all become part of the public record and considerations in this case. The applicant has said that they would like additional time to consider amending or adding conditions. We have, our next planning commission case is August 12th. So I believe, would the applicant like to nod or confirm that that would be enough time to add additional conditions?
We're right at town.
August 12th. August 26th would be our next meeting thereafter. So with that, I would like to, without objection, I'd like to move this case to our August 26th meeting. Whoop. Let me see. Is that gonna run up against our deadline for action?
Yeah, I think it was August 23rd.
It will.
The deadline for action is the 23rd of August.
Thank you very much. So in that case, we're gonna need to request an additional, I'll call it forty-five days to provide the applicant time to continue discussions with neighbors and the commissioners and staff and to make additional conditions. So I'll make that motion for an additional forty-five minutes, I'm sorry, forty-five days extension of time. Commissioner Otwell has seconded. Any further discussion? Ding, none. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and we will hopefully see you in August. So we are now at that point in the agenda where we have one change. At the beginning of this meeting, we announced that there would be a change due to a timely request for a reasonable accommodation. That change is that we moved agenda item E7, rezoning case Z1025 at 8125 Leesville Road, to be heard immediately following resolution of the previous item E3. So we will hear that case now. Once we complete this item E7, we will then proceed with the remainder of the agenda in the stated order. So moving next to E7, Z1025 at 8125 Leesville Road. This case is to change approximately 2.66 acres from R4 to R10 with conditions. And we will now turn to Mitra Sheshbaradron for a presentation from city planning staff.
Good morning, commission members. My name is Mitra Sheshbaradron, and I'll be talking about Z1025, which is a equestery zone just under three acres of land at 8125 Leesville Road from R4 to R10. And your action, your deadline for action is August 23rd. This area surrounding the site is predominantly residential, specifically residential four, which is what the site currently is. There is a bit of MH zoning or manufactured housing zoning north of the site, and there's a church currently on that site. Here's a look at the aerial of the site and its surrounding area currently. I'll move clockwise around the site, above the site, or north of the site, under the institutional and office label is the church, it's a Baptist church. And then southeast and southeast of the site are several single-family home subdivisions, primarily made of detached, and one division, subdivision of attached single-family homes, which is southeast of the site under that moderate-scale residential, and that is zoned R6. But predominantly, all the surrounding areas are R4. Southwest of the site, under the environmental parks and open space label, there is Leesville Road Park and Public Library. And then west of the site, under the institutional and office label, are Leesville Road Schools, elementary, middle, and high school. Here's another look at the site. Here's another look at the site. I think this shows pretty well the existing public amenities that surround the site to the west and southeast, and then also shows the, or southwest, sorry, and then also shows the existing subdivision on Ghost Pony Trail, which is there. And that has a stubb street that abuts the southern boundary of the site. And then there are some conditions that talk about providing additional buffers to that. So just wanted to point that out for you now. Okay. And then one last look at the site. This is just larger, to provide additional context. There is a existing commercial center north of the site, yeah, in that general area, is the Pine Crest Shopping Center. It has a Food Lion and some other, some restaurants, and then some other service retail. Here's a look at the site and its frontage along Leesville Road. As you can see, it's north and south views. That's, Leesville Road currently is a two-lane undivided street. It is designated on the street plan as an avenue, four-lane divided, but there are no current plans to build that out. And then shows existing pedestrian facilities that are in front of the site, sidewalks that run the length of Leesville Road presently, although they are not the width of city standards currently. And then one last view, the number three, this is what the stubb street on Ghost Pony Trail looks like. This is if you're on Ghost Pony Trail, looking at the site to the north. I'll also note that transportation staff noted in their comments that extension of this stubb street through the site is no longer required. It meets a UDO exemption because it would take up greater than 15% of the site. But if you have questions on that, I'll let transportation touch on them. It's just mentioned in the condition, so I just wanted to note that. And then here's one last look at the site, this is, or of the area. This is on Leesville Road, north and south of the site. The first image is going southbound down Leesville Road, so the site would be on your right. There's a bend in the road. I think this might come up in discussion. So these pictures are just to provide additional context of what the current state of Leesville Road looks like. And then the second image is the intersection of Leesville Road, Country Trail, and Tylerton Drive, south of the site. Here's a list of the proposed conditions from the applicant. The first condition prohibits a number of uses otherwise allowed in R10. The second condition prohibits the apartment building type, which would otherwise be allowed in R10. And then conditions three and four speak to additional buffers along the southern boundary of the site. For reference, that number three, there are two properties that like are on Ghost Pony Trail on the southern boundary. But condition number three increases the minimum side and rear yard setbacks to 10 and 30 feet each or respectively, which mimic what exists in R4 currently. And then condition number four has a provision of a wall of at least six feet in height and then planting of understory trees along that same boundary. Here's a look at the differences in entitlement going from R4 to R10. Under R4, estimated 16 units, and then under R10, 40. And then, again, the setbacks, and then the increase for the side and rear yard from the condition number three. Under R10, it would normally be 6 and 20 feet. So this, again, mimics what exists under R4 for that southern boundary of the site. A look at the transportation energy analysis. The site and the area does have a lower walk and bike score than the city on average, and there is no transit score. It doesn't have any, it's not, the site is not served by transit. However, it does have a lower transportation cost index than the city on average, and then has an average job proximity score. Like I said, the site is not currently served by any transit. The nearest transit line stops are over a mile and a half west of the site, along Glenwood Avenue. And then, looking at affordability, the request does not include subsidized units. However, it does allow for housing supply to be increased in the city overall, and it permits a variety of housing types otherwise not allowed under existing R4 zoning, and it permits smaller units and lots to be built on the site. However, it's not within walking distance of transit. And then the makeup of the residents in this area, there's a lower percentage of people of color living in this area and a lower percentage of low-income individuals. Both of those are roughly half the number of what we see in the city on average. And median gross rent in this area has risen slightly slower than the city on average, but it trails it only by a few percentage points at 22.3%. Overall, the request for R10 is consistent with the future land use map designation of moderate-scale residential for the site or for the area, and there is no urban form guidance. Generally, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. A number of policies help make it consistent. They mostly relate to consistency with the future land use map, as well as policies that support providing additional residential units and housing in variety in existing neighborhoods and throughout the city. And then the inclusion of PR 2.2, which speaks to providing park accessibility for residents throughout the city. And then a reminder that the site is near a few existing public amenities, like the school and Leesville Road Park. And then two inconsistent policies were found. These are related to the site not meeting one of the fire service response time standards. And then finally, your deadline for action is August 23rd. There are no outstanding issues. And then those are your two upcoming PC meeting dates. I'll pause for any questions. If not, happy to queue up the applicant.
Thanks very much. We will now open up public comment. We'll start with those in support. The applicant and those in favor have a total of 10 minutes to speak.
Can I get this in like a view mode? Good morning, Chair Miller, members of the Planning Commission, Worth Mills with Longleaf Law Partners, here on behalf of Vibes Fund LLC, who is the property owner and the rezoning applicant. Also joining me this morning is David Blevins, an engineer with B&amp;K. So Mitra did a great job of covering the nuts and bolts of the rezoning, and I appreciate the Planning Commission moving this case up on the agenda. I will say at the outset that we would like to defer this request and/or your recommendation to the August 12th meeting, understanding that there are still a lot of comments that neighbors have that we're looking to address. But wanted to introduce you to the project, have neighbors an opportunity to voice their concerns, gather any additional concerns that we hear from Planning Commission, and then come back after your summer recess. So I will go over briefly some of the existing conditions and what we're seeing to the property immediately north. So the site is 2.66 acres. We do have a street stub to our south, that Ghost Pony Trail, street stub there that leads to Country Trail. The 13 and 1/2 acre parcel to our north is owned by the Church of Latter Day Saints. This slide here shows the most recent, I know it's very hard to see on the screen, but I'll walk you through it. The red lines indicate our site boundary line in relation to the church's property. But I say that to say the church has submitted and is in review for a subdivision of their property. The church would retain about 7 and 1/2 acres and convey the remaining acreage to a home builder for what I think is planned to be seven single-family detached lots, sort of around the end of that cul-de-sac shown there. The really important piece here is that they are also showing a street stub to our northern property line. So if that project is executed in a timely fashion and stays ahead of this development, there could be a possibility that there could be vehicular connections to either the north or the south. As Mitra mentioned, we are not required by the UDO to extend that street all the way through from Ghost Pony up to our northern boundary line because of the size of that street in relation to the size of our property. But one thing that we're looking at, and we need to have additional conversations with Carter, as well as NC DOT, is, does the city and NC DOT have a preferred route for us to access Leesville Road? Whether that is north through the church property and then out to Leesville Road to the north, or whether in their mind it is a better option to go south down Ghost Pony, Country Trail, and then out to Leesville Road. So that's one thing that we're still looking to evaluate. I think if we can get a decision or some kind of guidance from NC DOT, then we can craft a zoning condition that addresses kind of how we access Leesville Road and probably some sort of pedestrian connection, you know, for the north or south, whichever way that we don't extend that street. As Mitra mentioned, the request is consistent with the moderate-scale future land use map designation, which includes R10 as an applicable zoning district. We have offered four conditions to date, the first being a use prohibition, the second prohibiting the apartment building type, third, installing or setting side and rear yard setbacks that exist for a single-family detached home in the current R4 zoning, and then incorporating a buffering condition that includes a six-foot wall and understory trees along the two homes on Ghost Pony, Ghost Pony Trail that front our southern boundary line. Additional conditions that we're going to be looking at, we just talked a lot about building form and building materials. We want to try to create a list of zoning conditions that can increase some compatibility with the existing single-family homes on Ghost Pony Trail. And we'll be looking at most likely unit reductions. I don't think that practically speaking, there's any way that we could get close to 40 units on this site. So those are a couple of the big picture items that we've continued to talk with the neighborhood about and would like additional time to continue to refine those before your August 12th meeting. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, as well as Mr. Blevins, but I'll reserve the rest of my time and let the neighbors have their day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak in support of this project? If so, please come forward. And then if seeing none, we'll move to public comment. For those in opposition, those opposed to this case have a total of 10 minutes to speak. Please come to the podium and introduce yourself when you're ready to speak. For efficiency, if you would like to speak, please go ahead and come over and start to line up as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commission, for allowing us to present, for your time and for your service to our city. I'm Adrienne Turner. I am a resident on Ghost Pony Trail. We, myself and Chris, are here representing our neighborhood, again, West Lake Country Trail. We are not real estate investors. We are not developers. We are not attorneys. This rezoning request doesn't give us the opportunity to come in, make some changes, and walk away with a profit. We will be here, and we will be living with this decision. As the buyers and now owners and the West Lake, West Lake Country Trail community can attest to, it was clear to us that 8125 Leesville Road was part of a larger master plan for our community that consisted of four phases. There was a large marketing sign posted at the edge of this particular property facing Leesville Road for many years that advertised single-family wooded home sites. Many of the master plan documents for our community are publicly available on the City of Raleigh website, with all of those documents being authorized for construction and signed off by six city departments. Mr. Goodwin, the previous owner of this property, wanted and agreed to the development of his property into six home sites, which was Phase Four of the West Lake Country Trail community. However, Mr. Goodwin desired to stay in his home as long as he possibly could. We understood and respect that. And yet, after his passing, this property was commercially sold to a real estate investor in Washington State. It was not made available for public purchase. While the sale of this property to Crowd Seed, one of Mr. Narcola's investment companies, and then subsequently transferred to another one of his investment companies, Vibes Fund, was out of the control of any of us. The desire to rezone it is not. Many of the residents of West Lake Country Trail, like Mr. Goodwin, envision ourselves staying in our home as long as we possibly can, in a harmonized community that was originally, as it was originally planned and intended. It is important to note that we, the homeowners of West Lake Country Trail, are not against progress or development in our area. However, what is being proposed here is in stark contrast to the master plans, and as you've seen in the community engagement portal comments, is highly concerning to the Leesville community.
Thanks, Adrienne. Commissioner, thank you very much. My name is Chris Satterfield, and like Adrienne, I live on Ghost Pony Trail, which I think has been noted already, 8009 Ghost Pony Trail is my address. I'm also the president of our HOA for our small 14-home community, so thank you for taking the time and hearing us today. So really, I, you know, wanted to kind of touch through some of our big concerns. You know, I think, you know, we've had a couple of community meetings with Mr. Mills, and appreciate, you know, him taking the time for that on behalf of, you know, whoever this group is that's purchased the land. You know, some of our initial challenges is there's very little vision of what this community even is to make a lot of conditional statements, or trying to fully understand what's trying to be done outside of, you know, from our perspective, we just kind of want to put town homes spot-zoned right in the middle of a couple of, you know, an R4 community that already exists and one that's already sort of clearly being proposed and under development, you know, to the north, as he stated. So, you know, not having a lot of context leads to some challenges from our perspective of understanding what it is, which kind of goes into some of the comments here. So, I mean, certainly significant traffic and safety concerns for our community. Again, like just for Ghost Pony itself, and we'll try to speak on behalf of like our greater Leesville community as well, you know, we're all sort of sandwiched near the schools there, which is a high school, elementary, middle, and high. Even on our street, you know, we, for a small sort of community that's been built, we have, you know, 25 kids, all under the age of 18, outplaying, outdoing a lot of things. Our street's already kind of stubbed, as you saw at the top. So while we don't encourage our kids to ever play in the street or things like that, they've become accustomed to, you know, having a place that's not a thoroughfare and just in general, not a lot of traffic outside of our community or visitors and other things that come in and out in its current state. So, and we'll touch on that as we go through the presentation of some of our concerns around the safety piece. You know, a big thing was, you know, we all kind of moved into our community thinking this was intended to be a harmonized, you know, zoned R4 community with the cohesive architectural consistencies. That was what we kind of thought we were buying into. There were clearly plans, as Adrienne noted, that that was kind of the, you know, medium-long-term plan for this area. And that's what we intended to happen until now. So there's also, as Mr. Mills noted, there's currently the submission for Winter's Hollow, which I think will also have synergy for West Lake Country Trail at some point. That's going to go into the north and roughly be the same type of neighborhood ours currently is, zoned R4 with, you know, seven to nine homes. I can't speak to exactly how that one would end today, but, you know, not something that is of concern for our community, since it has very, you know, a lot of synergy for what we currently have. Adding a town home in between two sections of neighborhoods are going to create, you know, disjointed developments and a lot of limited ability to solve future issues. I mean, like just thinking about, you know, not having a cohesive HOA, or things where if they have an issue related, which we'll talk about stormwater, stormwater or other things, you know, now we have to try to deal with separate entities, and we're all sort of utilizing the same, we'll say, infrastructure, because they all have our different infrastructures, but it's all going to flow into the same creek. We're all going to deal with the same type of downhill challenges from a stormwater standpoint, and our community is on the downhill of that. So, so a lot of concerns over the inability to, you know, put something that's so different right between two communities, just for the sake of doing it. It's already very costly for our 14 homes. You know, just simply, our HOA dues only really go to support our, the infrastructure that we deal with for our stormwater. So just maintenance inspections. We've had a lot of challenges with our stormwater, so just things where we have to have regular maintenance, other things. So adding more impervious-type structures uphill from us is very concerning. Yeah. And so on the stormwater, so we've had historical challenges. Community was turned over from the developer less than two years ago. Any previous communication of those issues is unknown with the city. You know, a lot of issues with just concern over the, how the stormwater will be set up, how it'll work with the other community that's going to be developed, et cetera. And then, you know, again, the proximity to town home types just right next to kind of R4 single-family homes, just from architectural and cohesive and harmonized community, is just not something that's, you know, something that we're looking forward to in any way. Sorry, okay, my bad. Also, there are tree conservation sites currently mandated on, or tree conservation areas currently mandated on this. areas currently mandated on this site. We're asking that these are to be maintained at minimum as well for anyone who would develop this, but these are already recorded as part of the previous master plans of the city. So getting into transportation issues, so you can see here, these are just some pictures off of Country Trail, which is the main thoroughfare that leads to Leesville's, you can get to all Leesville schools this way, so you can own Leesville Highway as well. But you can see, we've just recently gotten speed humps here because there were such traffic issues, and, you know, even today, there are still accidents, people that will avoid them. You know, speed humps in and of themselves doesn't stop it. We're happy and thankful that these were put on Country Trail because of the massive amounts of school traffic that flows through here, but these are just a couple of pictures to kind of show through. I know I'm going to all these details, but this is just sort of a separate analysis we did of what we think are more likely daily trips related to some information that was put in, but the main key takeaways here are, you know, as Mr. Mills stated, he probably wouldn't do 40, like let's just say they do 20, right? But if you had six R4 homes versus 20 townhomes or whatever, and let's just assume there's two cars per household, there's no transit, as we've discussed here, available. You know, potentially an additional, you know, 55, or sorry, 56 trips per day, if you take morning and night, just kind of assuming the math there, that would be 14,000, nearly 15,000 additional trips per year, just assuming workdays, 260 days a year. And so over five years, that could equate to roughly 73,000 additional trips that this would promote in this already very congested area. So some of the main things are, like on Ghost Pony, the safety and sightlines, there's already kind of blind entrances coming in and coming from the top with some pictures shown. One of the, one of our main stormwater pipes is, crosses our main road, and so, you know, that type of trip usage over time is very concerning to cause, you know, life cycle shortening and potential issues that we would have to deal with. Already, the school traffic is major in this area, supporting all the schools and multiple times per day. Even on Country Trail, it backs up to our, our area. So here's our neighborhood, and sorry, I guess I'm just realizing.
Yeah, it's very limited visibility.
Sorry, I'm running out of time.
It's a very blind curve to get in our neighborhood.
Sorry.
Just looking, we're at the top of a hill, and again, people, it's hard to see going down the street.
Thank you all very much. We will now bring this back to the table for questions from our commissioners and comments. I'd like to start off by just noting that, reiterating that the applicant did say that they intend to come back in August after making additional conditions. So when we do have three additional cases that now we have 30 minutes to get through, so as commissioners, we really need to stick our, keep our comments to those that the applicant can really focus, focus on with respect to any additional changes to conditions that they can make before August. Thank you, yes. Commissioner Neptun.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the residents, again, for your time and energy this morning, being with us, you know, which it's worth acknowledging, we're all volunteers here, so, you know, we're in this together, and we're trying to get through this as quickly as we can together. Could we get a copy of that presentation that was just made? Could the commission get a copy of that presentation? You know, we can chew on that over the next month until we see you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Yes, Vice President Bennett.
Thank you. I'll be very quick. I live off of Leesville Road. I can attest to everything you say. I am going to look forward to Mr. Mills, I want to hear about your conversations with NCDOT about access to Leesville. My kids both went to all three of the Leesville schools there, can attest to several really, really bad accidents in that curve, so I want to hear more about what you work out in terms of access. And as I mentioned with the last case, I'll also look forward to your conditions about how you are planning to make what your development mesh with the community that's already there. So thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Otwell.
Thank you, Chair Miller. If I remember correctly, Leesville Road was being considered for widening and safety improvements as part of the most recent transportation bond. Could we hear from transportation staff, was this particular part of the street under consideration? And is it a, what is the state of those plans?
Top of mind, I'm lacking some details, but we can bring that back to you in a future meeting.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner, any other comments or thoughts for the applicant to consider before August with respect to any of the neighbors' concerns or any other conditions, concerns? Okay? Yes?
Just one clarification, I thought I heard that it has not been decided on whether or not Ghost Pony Trail is going to punch through. I thought, Worth, you said that hasn't been decided yet due to the type of the street and the size of the parcel. Did I hear that correctly?
There's, there's an exception in the UDO with regard to street stubs and connectivity that says if the resulting street stub is more than 15% of your net site area, then the city can't require you to run that street all the way through. So what we're trying to evaluate, one, you know, will we have another option to connect the street either, you know, from Ghost Pony to the south or from the north, given that future subdivision? And I think given those, if we do have choices, well then, you know, is it in the neighborhood's best interest for us to maybe make, you know, one of those other connections pedestrian-only, where you could bike or walk there, but you couldn't necessarily get a car through there? That's going to depend on our conversations with NCDOT to figure out if they have significant preferences over one or the other. I guess the one, the good thing is that there doesn't seem to be an issue with the cul-de-sac that the church is installing. I haven't seen any comments related to that on the city's development portal. So it's just a matter of us continuing those conversations with NCDOT to get their preliminary opinion, and then, you know, we can kind of move accordingly with any zoning conditions.
Thanks very much. Yes, Commissioner Neptun.
Madam Chair, do you need a motion to move this conversation to August?
Sure.
So moved.
Okay. So that is a motion to move this to our August 12th regular planning commission meeting. Do I have a second? Second, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to our next item, E4, that's a resounding case, Z4824, at 1220 and 1246 Wicker Drive. This case is to change approximately 3.51 acres from IX3 to CX20 urban limited with conditions, and we will turn to Erin Klinger for a presentation from the city.
Good morning again, commissioners. This is case Z4824 for 1220 and 1246 Wicker Drive. The applicant is requesting rezone approximately three and a half acres from industrial mixed-use to CX20 with the urban limited frontage. The deadline for action is, I apparently counted wrong, the 23rd. The zoning in the area is currently predominantly industrial mixed-use. The closest commercial mixed-use zoning is adjacent to the site to the south and the west. Here is an aerial view of the site and the surrounding area. The areas immediately adjacent are industrial to the south and commercial to the north. There is a low-scale residential neighborhood in the area, but it's behind buildings on the other side of Atlantic Avenue, and then the Iron Works Development is across the street on Iron Works Drive. Here is a closer aerial view of the properties where you can better see the newer Iron Works Development. Here are two images of the site. The first was taken in front of 1246 Wicker Drive, which as you can see is largely undeveloped currently, and then the second was taken from the driveway of 1220 Wicker Drive. The proposed conditions would prohibit detention centers, jails, and prisons. Square footage for retail would be limited to 20,000 square feet, and for office to 50,000. Number of residential units would be limited to 675. So under the, one of the biggest differences with the existing and the proposed zoning is the number of units would increase by about six times. The setbacks would also increase slightly. And then the differences in the office and retail square footage is a substantial decrease with the proposed zoning. The site has higher walk, transit, and bike scores than average. It also benefits from a lower transportation cost index and higher proximity to jobs. There is also transit service nearby that runs along Capitol Boulevard. While the request does not include any subsidized units, it does add to the housing supply, permit a larger variety of housing types, and is also within walking distance of transit. The area benefits from a lower, or has a lower percentage of people of color and a low-income population, and the change in median gross rent has been lower as well. The requested zoning is consistent with the future land use map designation of community mixed-use. The proposed frontage is also consistent with the urban form designations of frequent transit area, transit station area, and BRT area. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan overall, as it would add to the housing supply and allow for development of greater variety of housing types. There are several consistent policies that it's consistent with related to infrastructure, connectivity, and housing variety, as you'll see on the next three slides. And those are the remainder of the consistent policies. No policies were found with which the request is inconsistent. Again, the deadline for action is the 23rd of August. The next meeting is going to be on August 12th.
Thank you very much. We're now opening up to public comment. The applicant and those in favor have a total of 10 minutes to speak.
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission. Jason Baron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant, Wake County ABC Commission. Joining me this morning is Brian Hicks, on behalf of the commission, who will speak briefly about ABC Commission's thoughts with respect to this site and its overall long-term planning as well as its mission. I will be brief, being sensitive to everybody's time, recognizing the meeting is running over. As you all are aware, as you heard in the staff's presentation, this is an area that is, has seen a lot of revitalization, a lot of exciting growth going on, changing from traditional warehouses that have been there for a long time to a place for people to live and work. And so Wake County ABC Commission sees this as an opportunity to be able to position this site to be a part of kind of the next phase. The Iron Works, which is on the front of this site, adjacent to Wake Forest, this one backs up to it, there's a similar CMX 20 parcel to the south of this site that is undeveloped at this point, that we think is, will position this site well to be complementary to what is going on over there. From a comprehensive plan consistency standpoint, we agree completely with the staff's conclusions associated with consistency. It is community mixed-use, it's in a frequent transit area, and so with that, like I said, I'll keep my comments brief, and I will turn it over to Mr. Hicks. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chair, members of the board and staff, thank you for your time. My name is Brian Hicks. I serve as the General Manager of Wake County Alcoholic Beverage Control. Thank you for your time today. I'm not sure if any of y'all have ever been to our stores, but we operate 26 stores in Wake County, all 12 municipalities. We have 12 in the City of Raleigh Municipal Corporate Limits, hoping to open up a 13th one over here on Salisbury Street, couple blocks away. Let me explain our operations, but sort of explains our vision. We are a receipt-supported agency, organization. There are no tax dollars that go into our operations. All our revenue supports all of our operations. One good thing about our system is all of our money goes back to us, the citizens. We gave $15 million last year back to all the municipalities in Wake County. $3 million of that went back to the City of Raleigh. That is used for various services, various purposes, even funding planning staff that is involved in it there. And we also try to be good partners in the community. $6 million of grant money every year goes back to nonprofit organizations who support and treat those with alcohol and substance abuse. So we are proud to be a good partner in improving Wake County as a whole. I tell you all that to basically say, we are not in the development business. Wake County ABC is not here to develop a piece of property. As the City of Raleigh has grown, you all have done a wonderful job. Your predecessor's staff has done a wonderful job with infill redevelopment, the renaissance, you could say, of the City of Raleigh and developing what we see here today. We moved to this piece of property and purchased it in 1965, so we have been there a right good while before anything has been there. We've expanded a couple of times, but we have simply outgrown our piece of property. As more people have moved here to the city and to Wake County, our operations have also grown, and we have outgrown this piece of property. Our neighbors who are here today, Grub Ventures, have done a wonderful job developing a piece of property around us, and as we move on to another location, we want to make sure that we maximize the use of our piece of property as best as possible for the citizens and have it comparable to what our neighbors are developing, what the City of Raleigh has with their adopted plans and vision. When we sell this property, again, we just want something that is only comparable to it, no intentions of developing, but we just want to maximize the potential. So thank you for your time, thank you for consideration today.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak in support of this project? If so, please come forward. And seeing none, we will open up public comment. For those in opposition, those opposed also have a total of 10 minutes to speak, please come to the table, or to the podium, excuse me. And seeing none, we can bring it to the table for any comments from our commissioners. Commissioner Otwell.
Thank you, Chair Miller. I can get it started. I voted against the rezonings directly to the south of this associated with Grub Ventures, mainly out of concern for urban frontage and pedestrian safety. I thought it created an attractive nuisance, but I think there are some very important differences in this case. The applicant has committed to an urban limited frontage, so we're not going to get dead space and parking decks facing the major streets, and the city has committed to a project to improve the intersection of Woodard-Carmile and Atlantic Avenue. And so with those two considerations in mind, I'm ready to support this project whenever the time is appropriate.
Thanks very much. Any other, Commissioner Cochran?
Yeah, so in the report, it mentioned... Sorry. In the report, it mentioned that there are two small quantity hazardous waste generators, approximately 1.5, I'm sorry, 0.5 kilometers from this property. Can we get an understanding of what those are, and is there any plan to move those if we're densifying population in this area? I guess that should be directed to planning department.
Does staff know the answer to that question? We'll start there, if not.
I'm going to look real quick. I don't recall off the top of my head what those were, but I'm going in the process of looking up what those are.
In the meantime, is the applicant familiar with that issue?
We are not. We are not aware of where those are located and who is the creator of those hazardous generators, yeah.
Thank you. While we're looking that up, are there any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Fox.
Other than that outstanding question, much like Commissioner Otwell, I'm ready to support this.
I believe staff may still be conferring.
While we're looking... Do you want to move on to the next item and come back to this?
Yes. Thank you. We'll give staff another minute to confer, and in the meantime, move on with the next item of the agenda and circle back here shortly. So moving on, oh yes, staff is ready.
It's a small printing company, so it would have just like ink and things like that.
Any other questions? And what's the second one?
The second hazardous site?
There's two, there's two small quantity hazardous waste generators. So there's two, um, local properties generating hazardous waste. One of them is a printer.
It's a cleaners.
Okay. I have no other questions. I'm ready to support this.
Thank you. Entertained a motion?
With regards to Z forty-eight twenty-four, I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated Jan, uh, June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to the next item, Z two twenty-five at two oh one Bragg Street. This is to change approximately zero point zero seven acres from R-ten with the NCOD to NX-three with the NCOD. We'll turn to Matthew Clem.
Thank you. Uh, yep. So, a pretty small parcel, uh, zero point zero seven acres from R-ten with the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District maintaining that, to Neighborhood Mixed Use with a three-story building height limit. Um, the Raleigh Historic Development Commission reviewed and recommended approval of the request, uh, and your deadline for action is August twenty-third. So, on the zoning map, you can see, um, to the north and northeast, uh, the yellow and hatch color is the location of the South Park Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. Those areas are also zoned residential ten. Uh, directly south across the street is a planned development district that was approved in twenty-nineteen that is, um, based in the Neighborhood Mixed Use District. So it had a NX district base. There is a four-story building height limit. The entitlement for that PD, which is currently under development, uh, is for a hundred, um, unit residential and a ten thousand square foot, uh, commercial use on the, the southeast corner, excuse me, yeah, southeast corner, located there. Um, farther south and west, there's, uh, industrial mixed-use zoning, um, associated with the, uh, the uses there and the, the rail line. Um, just a view of the neighborhood here, you can see the property at the intersection of Blunt and, uh, Bragg Street, uh, the construction site to the south is now this new adjacent development. Um, again, a hundred units, um, in these, uh, townhouse-style apartment buildings, up to four stories with, uh, rooftop terraces. This is the existing, um, building and shop on the rezoning property. It was built in nineteen thirty. Um, and from what I can tell, uh, it was originally built as the Trailways Grill. Um, the property here that is under development for the current PD was the location of the Carolina Coach and Carolina Trailways, uh, facility. Um, in going through historic neighborhood, excuse me, newspaper articles, all I could find on the Trailways Grill was reference to, uh, classifieds to hire staff to work the lunch shift. So I believe that the shop is used, um, the restaurant was used to serve the, uh, the workers at the Trailways, um, in Carolina Coach facility to the south. The advertisement said, "No Sundays or evening shifts," so a lunch spot. Um, here we are on Blunt looking north at the property. You can see, um, on the right-hand side into the foreground, the new development. Uh, so currently, with the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District and the R-ten zoning, we think three units can be built there. Going to the Neighborhood Mixed Use, six units can be built there. The Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District limits building height, amongst other dimensional standards, to twenty-eight point seven feet, which is a two-story structure most likely. Um, the property is currently zoned R-ten. Um, the business there is operating under a non-conforming use allowance, and so currently, they can have up to eleven-hundred-and-sixty square feet of retail use. That's the size of the existing historic building from nineteen thirty. The Neighborhood Mixed Use, uh, we estimate would permit, um, a slight increase in those numbers, um, if the property or building was expanded or, uh, redeveloped. So, the setbacks, um, the front setback is regulated by the NCOD, which is staying in place. The side and rear setbacks, uh, you see change slightly, um, from existing to proposed zoning. Um, higher walk score, transit score, bike score, transportation cost index, and job proximity than the city average. This is a site, um, just outside of downtown southeast Raleigh. It's walkable, bikable, transit accessible to the city center, where there are, um, lots of jobs and other opportunities for employment. Um, site is currently, um, served by three different transit routes, including a regional route to Wake Tech Express, the RX forty, and you can see the site pointed to with the little flag there. Um, the request does not include any subsidized units, but does, uh, if redeveloped, add to the housing supply, um, and allow smaller units. Of course, it is in walking distance of transit and downtown in general. There's a higher demographic index, uh, on the site than in the city, so sixty-five compared to the, um, thirty-seven percent city average. So, uh, a higher percentage of minority, minority residents and lower-income residents in the area. Um, the site, excuse me, the building is a contributing structure to the, uh, East Raleigh-South Park National Registry District. Again, it was built in nineteen thirty. There are more details about, um, its contributions in the staff report. And again, the, um, the business in the building has served as a neighborhood commercial use since the nineteen thirties, originally as the Trailways Grill. Um, it is inconsistent with the moderate-scale residential designation. You can see that it's just on the line, um, north of Bragg Street. Um, so inconsistent with the future land use map because going to the Neighborhood Mixed Use District would allow a broader range of commercial uses. Um, it is consistent with the urban form map. There's not an urban frontage, uh, on the zoning designation, but the lot itself and the existing structure is very small. It's like forty-seven by sixty-seven feet wide. Um, it's on the corner. Um, the South Park NCOD front yard setback has a build-to range effectively of eight feet to thirty feet. Um, so considering the size of the lot and any reasonable use of the piece of property, given its, like, shape and geometry, um, the, any redevelopment with the NCOD would satisfy the requirements, most of them, of the urban form map. Um, so consistent there. Uh, again, inconsistent with the future land use map, consistent, uh, urban form in overall. Again, um, these policies and the policies in the comprehensive plan do encourage small-scale neighborhood-serving, uh, commercial uses, which this property has done since it was built ninety-five years ago. Um, so, really, going to the Neighborhood Mixed Use District just broadens the, um, range of neighborhood-serving uses that the property owners or future owners of the site can, can use to serve the community. Under the existing, um, non-conforming use that they're operating under, they, they're really bound to, um, what is there now, which is, um, a small retail use. Um, again, maintaining the, uh, NCOD is in line with, um, conservation, enhancing, and rising neighborhood policies, uh, and neighborhood commerce. Again, the request is inconsistent with the future land use map. It's also inconsistent with this map in the South Park, um, Small Area Plan, uh, which is the South Park Focal Point Policy, which is this red, uh, block here. So the site is just across the street from that block. This block is the one that contains the, um, hundred-unit, ten thousand square foot planned development district that's currently under construction. So, um, inconsistent there. Here's the RHDC approval unanimous eight to zero, citing that development maintaining the NCOD, which is requested, will be incongruous with the existing built, um, pattern of the neighborhood. Uh, and just a kind of a summary here as well of what we discussed. The approval of the inconsistent, um, future land use designation would require a de facto modification to the Neighborhood Mixed Use District, um, just extend it to this area. Uh, no outstanding issues. Um, your deadline is August twelfth, and, uh, Catherine and Arnold Brown are here. They're the property owners, um, to speak as well.
Thank you so much. We will now open up to public comment. The applicant and those in support have a total of ten minutes to speak.
How y'all doing? Okay. Um, just want to say hello and, um, just want to say, we have owned, um, two oh one Bragg since, um, nineteen eighty-nine. Um, and it was commercial property then, and, um, we ran a little business there. We had a little convenience store. Um, we stayed there for quite a while. And, um, I just want to say that, um, thanks for meeting with us today, and we are here to discuss the proposed rezoning for our property at two oh one Bragg Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. We currently operate a retail store under a restrictive non-conforming use permit, um, as the property is zoned R-ten residential. Um, we want to rezone it to neighborhood mixed use. Um, this change would allow us to lease the property to businesses such as pet roomers, you know, um, a deli, art studio, bakery, you know, other similar community-focused retail and service establishments. We think this shift of, um, neighborhood mixed use, um, would, um, unlock the true potential of two oh one Bragg Street and be a huge benefit to the community around Bragg Street. It will bring much-needed services and amenities directly to residents, um, fostering a more walkable and self-sufficient, uh, neighborhood. Um, allowing other businesses, um, where it can become a natural gathering place, you know, for the residents, um, because it is pedestrian-friendly. Um, two oh one Bragg has always served the community, you know. Um, we kindly ask for your support in approving this, um, request, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak in support of this project? If so, please come forward. And seeing none, we'll open it up to the opposition. Those opposed to this case have a total of ten minutes to speak. Please come to the podium. And seeing none, we can bring it back to the table. Yes, Commissioner Neptune?
Uh, just briefly, I wanted to thank the, the owners, um, the developers of the property two oh one Bragg Street for being with us this morning. Again, thank you for your time and for your energy, uh, this morning. Uh, and as a quick follow on that, you know, I've, I've lived, uh, several blocks away for some years now, and have actually found myself in a little South Park Bike Club, uh, with, you know, residents in the area. And I can certainly attest to the desire for more neighborhood mixed-use retail options, gathering spaces in the community. And so, so just briefly, um, I would just, I would just acknowledge that I'm certainly prepared to support this as someone who has lived nearby. Um, and, and frankly, I feel like we're seeing the sort of neighborhood mixed uses, uh, in other communities, like Five Points as an example. You know, you look at a, like a little restaurant like Aja, opening up in the middle of a neighborhood, you know, really, it's, it's becoming a whole bustling community over there. Not to say that, you know, it hasn't been previously, but I'm just saying. I think just to see you here today trying to advance this, uh, in the South Park neighborhood certainly means a lot to me, um, personally, professionally, as a volunteer, you know, on the commission. And again, I'm just, I'm prepared to support it. So, thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Macay?
Um, did I hear you all say that you're looking to lease it, but you're going to maintain ownership, just out of curiosity? Or are you all looking to sell it?
We are leasing now, but in the future.
We're selling, yeah.
We also...
Would you like to speak into the microphone so, um, those at home can hear as well?
Well, we just, if, for the future, you know, like, people are complaining about it being smoke shop now, but we want it to be other stuff. We want it other, to get other tenants in. We want it to have, but we were limited on what we could do. So it would just be better for us to be, you know, to, to have a wider variety of tenants that we could have in there, you know, for the community. We want to support the community. We want to help, you know, we want to make it a place for people to come and gather and to enjoy, you know.
But are you all going to keep it for a while? I'm just curious.
We don't, we don't know.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I purchased the property, uh, was about twenty-two years old. I'm sixty now, and it's a big asset to us as individuals. And we have five sons and one daughter, and it would be a inheritance for our grandchildren. There's eight and one on the way, nine. So inheritance, an inheritance is a key part of the beginning purchase of this property, which we would love to run a business there also, but we're aging, and we enjoy peace.
Mm-hmm.
I understand the public, but we enjoy peace.
Thank you so much.
Sure, we maintain.
Thank you. Commissioner Alwell?
Thank you, Chair Miller. Um, I remember a case brought by Jessica Peacock...
Mm-hmm.
...for a similar kind of property, and I was really excited about that project. I don't think it came off the ground, but...
Which I could speak to, but, you know...
But, but I think these kind of businesses, these family-owned businesses, small in the community, are vital, vital for neighborhoods and for building community and trust. And I'm super excited to do anything to facilitate the continuing success of your business, and good luck with your coming grandchild.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments from commissioners, questions? Seeing none, yes, Commissioner Ever?
Uh, probably answer a question for staff, but speaking about consistency when these other cases have come by, this is a, a, not a conditional case. Are there any businesses that could go in there that there would be concern about, that you may want to condition against? We do that regularly on other businesses in all neighborhoods, southeast Raleigh, north Raleigh, et cetera. So, just not sure if that's something we want to consider.
To his point, what he's meaning is, like, in some of the other cases, we prohibited liquor stores or clubs, or, so, uh, he's asking if there's any conditions in the rezoning that you all want to consider, so that as you redevelop this property, there are certain things you don't want there? Are there certain businesses you don't want in the retail space? Like...
Yeah, we don't want liquor stores.
So, I would, so the applicant, um, if you could speak into the podium for that. The, uh, question is if you've considered any prohibited uses, um, to add as conditions on this rezoning?
Nightclubs, liquor stores.
Yeah, we, we don't want like a nightclub or liquor store. We want to support the community. You know, we want it to be community-friendly. You know, we want a pet room in places, a little coffee shop, something like that. We're going towards something like that. We don't want liquor stores and stuff.
Yeah, the neighbor could discuss with staff, um, about prohibited uses, if the applicant is open to making, um, conditions related to that?
Yeah, I would just advise on the spot that making those changes now at the table would require an amendment to the request and, like, additional fee to pay for the, um, conditional use rezoning. Um, so there would just be more steps involved later to, to make those changes. Uh, again, if, if there's something that the planning commission sees that should be disallowed by zoning condition, they could give you that feedback.
Perhaps.
Since you have a debt, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Commissioner Macay?
Since you have a deadline to August twenty-third, and our next meeting is August twelfth, you have time, so we don't have to necessarily, I'm, I'm down to support the project, but just to protect what you all are talking about in your legacy, maybe you don't want a strip club there, and you don't want a liquor store, or a nightclub, or something that, you know, saying may bring down the value of what you all are trying to build. And you're saying pet shops and things like that, but maybe take some time. I would suggest taking some time to consider what you don't want there, so that you can put that in the rezoning, so that as this is developed, what you intended to be is closer to what you intended to be.
Commissioner Bennett, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Shelburne was first.
Well, yeah, this is my first meeting, so I don't know how to do this, but I don't, I'm, I'm not worried about any of those other uses. I think I'm just going to trust their judgment, so I'm ready to motion whatever the motion is to approve this, so we can have at least a second decision today before we leave. So, what, like, it's consistent, I'm not sure what the phrasing is I'm supposed to use, but I'm ready to vote to say yes to this, so we can move on and not make them wait till August.
Um, you're open to making a motion, but there, we might have additional discussion at the table. I'm not sure that we would have those votes, but let me get a little more discussion. Vice Chair Bennett?
I was going to say something similar, but I wanted to ask Mr. Clem, did you say there would be additional fees and things involved? I, I, I'm not interested in having them do that. I, again, trust that what you're doing is beneficial to the community, and it's maintaining the NCOD, um, so I'm prepared to support it today.
Commissioner Fox?
Um, I'm, um, ready to make a motion. Um, I'll just, if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, I'll say I would have more concerns if this was a rezoning to CX, but because it is NX, it already restricts, um, some of the types of uses that we mentioned. So, that's already, um, that's already included, um, with the, with the zoning... So, that's already, that's already included with the, with the zoning that's, that's being requested. So with that, in regards to case Z two twenty-five, I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, contained in the agenda materials and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment. This recommendation also includes an amendment to the future land use map to the extent described in the adopted consistency statement.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion on this topic? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes eight to one. Yes, would you like to stand for the record?
And if I could, I'm, I'm a hundred percent in support of the project. The only reason I'm voting against it is for consistency, and I'm not familiar enough with N X. I totally trust y'all and, and what you're trying to do, but just, me personally, I don't have the knowledge of what N X is, allows you to do and not do. So, good luck, I'm glad you're here, I support the project, but just sort of through a technicality, I had to vote against it. So I just want to put that on the record, so council knows I'm in support of the project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and I want to second that, that not being clear what's excluded through that designation, I would encourage council to consider the conditions if they are able to add any before council votes on it.
Can I add that to them as they're leaving? I know this is a cumbersome project, but you do have an opportunity to add some, though we've passed it here, to sit and think about what you don't want to see there, so that when this goes to city council, now that we've moved it along, because we all agree and support it. So now that this goes to city council as it moves along, you all do have some time to consider what you, because you may not have, never thought that, about what you don't want there. You know, you have an ideas of what you do want, so I just want to give them a suggestion if you want to, to consider adding conditions, maybe if you want, before it goes to council.
So, yeah, so, but to that end, this is not a conditional use case, so it would be more complicated than just adding conditions, so just make sure you speak with staff on that. If we had had more time, we could have reviewed the list of uses that are already prohibited under N X. We did not do that here. I think that will probably resolve the concerns that we do have at this table. So, I would just, just notice it may be more complicated than just adding conditions since it's not currently a conditional use case. The time is now eleven fifty-nine. Wanted to check for quorum purposes, if folks are able to stay an additional fifteen minutes. If you're not, if you need to leave, please raise your hand.
Got a plane to catch.
We have at least two, okay. I believe we can still maintain a quorum um, for that purpose, but we do need to, sorry. Yes, in her absence, we could do that as well. I know that you may need to leave, but I think we need to, it looks like we may need to defer our last case, Z seven twenty-five, to our next meeting. We think we can go through it really quickly. Okay, never mind, we're going to try to get through this one very quickly. Rezoning case Z seven twenty-five at thirty-three twenty-eight Forestville Road. This case has changed approximately fourteen point one zero acres from R four to C X four with conditions. Right before we turn to Matthew McGregor for a presentation, I just wanted to note for those commissioners leaving, you may be elected to things in your absence and you will not have the opportunity to object. So, moving on to our staff presentation.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, I'll be quick as possible about this. So this is Z seven twenty-five, as previously stated, is fourteen point ten acres. The requested rezone from R four to C X four C U. The address is thirty-three twenty-eight Forestville Road. Planning commission deadline for action is August twenty-third. Zoning in the area is predominantly residential with some commercial. Surrounding zoning is R four, C X three, and R six. There's also additionally some residential mixed use and office mixed use along Mitchell Mill. This is a look at the surrounding site. Bethlehem Moldavian Baptist Church is across the street. The site itself includes a church, the, there is Raleigh Fire Station twenty-eight directly to the south, some private open space, low-sco residential and commercial along Mitchell Mill. Another look at the site. Here's three different angles. Site's very large, so it's kind of hard to get like a good comprehensive view, but east, southeast facing on Mitchell Mill Road, south facing on Forestville, and north facing on Forestville. Same images, and then in addition, there's a kind of little back road behind the church, so I figured it'd just be worth noting that there is kind of a wraparound. There is only one proposed condition. I think now would be a good time to bring up the fact that there is no immediate, as of now, no immediate um, development plans for the site. The reason they are rezoning this site is to allow for a larger sign under R four. Only like neighborhood freestanding signs are allowed, so by rezoning to C X, they have more access to larger signs. They, one proposed condition that they have is to help them, you know, mitigate any requirements for a T I A. So they proposed maximum entitlements on residential dwelling units, hundred fifteen thousand square feet on office and medical, and fifty-seven thousand five hundred square feet on retail. And then D E F are kind of a combination of the previous three scenarios, again, to uh, you know, mitigate any need for a T I A. Condition one does however, not stop the development or expansion of other allowed uses on the property such, which is like basically including and meaning that the church, if they were to want to expand for church purposes, they can. The condition is basically just kind of a safety net. As stated, the zoning is R four, it's fourteen point ten acres, maximum units under the R four condition is eighty-one. And then the C X four rezone, proposed zoning I should say, will allow a maximum units of three hundred twenty-five, hundred fifteen thousand fifty-seven five hundred, previously said, due to the condition. The site has a lower walk score than average, no transit scores provided, it's got a lower bike score than average, it's got an average transportation cost index, and it's got a lower job proximity than average. There's no bus service route to the site. The Go Raleigh map doesn't even include the site on it, so you kind of just have to get a general feel. It's directly kind of off, the nearest is Perry Road, so it's over two miles, not very accessible in my opinion. Technically speaking, the rezoning would add to the housing supply technically. It does not include subsidized units, it permits a variety of housing types, smaller units are allowed, smaller lots than the citywide average are allowed, and it is not within walking distance of transit. The area has a racial diversity similar to the citywide average with around forty-four percent of the population identifying as people of color compared to forty, uh, forty-six citywide. A lower percentage of low income residents live in the area compared to Raleigh's overall average with twelve percent in the area versus twenty-nine citywide. And then the median gross rent in the area has increased by twenty-five percent since twenty sixteen, which is roughly in line with Raleigh's overall increase of twenty-five point five during the same period. The requested C X four C U designation is consistent with, with the future land use map. The site is designated as community mixed use. There's no urban form guidance for the site, however, I would like to note that it does a but the Wake Crossroads Mixed Use Center, so I just figured that would be worth noting. As previously stated, consistent with future land use map, it is also consistent with the comprehensive plan. Here is a list of, some consistent policies I found. They focus mainly on future land use map consistency, housing variety, zoning for housing. And then I have found two inconsistent policies, but they are your standard kind of fire response time standards, so, you know, nothing, I would say, out of the ordinary. I have no outstanding issues, and deadline for action is August twenty-third. And let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
And I'll let Chad come up.
Opening up for public comment, the applicant and those in favor have a total of ten minutes to speak.
Yep. Good, well, good afternoon, Chair Miller, members of the planning commission. Thank you for sticking around to hear this case, we're grateful to, to be heard today. My name is Chad Essex with Porter Spruill, three oh one Fayetteville Street, nineteen hundred. Here this morning on behalf of the applicant and owner of this property, Wake Crossroads Baptist Church. On behalf of the church, joining me here this morning is Jeff Gordon, who is the executive pastor of the church, and Greg Pickman, who serves as a corporate officer and trustee of the church. Matt's done a nice job summarizing, so I'll try not to be too redundant and kind of be mindful of your time. The subject property is just over fourteen acres, located north of Mitchell Mill Road at its intersection with Forestville Road. I want to take just a few seconds and just give you a little background about the church and this site in particular. If there's any history busts on the commission, the roots of Wake Crossroads Baptist Church dates back to seventeen eighty-nine, when it was formerly constituted as the Baptist Church of Christ at crossroads with fifty-three charter members. It's considered to be one of the oldest Baptist churches in Wake County. Throughout much of the eight, eighteen and nineteen hundreds, the church's primary place of worship was on the east side of Forestville Road, right here. You'll see this is the cemetery, and that's the former church site there. A fire burned the church down in the early nineteen hundreds, and a new church was constructed there, which, which stayed there until the nineteen nineties. The church acquired this property in the nineteen eighties, and in nineteen ninety-six, a twenty-four thousand square foot education and worship spate was built on this fourteen acre parcel. In two thousand nine, the church constructed a thirty-two thousand square foot addition with a gymnasium, student wing, preschool wing, elementary age classrooms, and a commercial kitchen. However, in two thousand fifteen, the city of Raleigh acquired significant right-of-way slope easements, drainage easements, and utility easements along Mitchell Mill Road for the Mitchell Mill Road widening project. You'll see that that's what the, it looked like before the road widening project. After that, you'll see those crosses that they had there down close to the road, which is kind of a, a, a marker point for a lot of people in the area. They always said, turn, turn, turn at the crosses. After the right-of-way acquisition, you'll see that there's significant slope along the front of the property and significant easements that run across the front of the property. So since the road widening project has occurred, the church has been looking to replace those crosses as well as appropriate signage that would be visible for the church. Given the slope easements that run, run along the front, as well as all the utility easements that are there, that sign is going to need to be pushed further back into the site. And with the existing R four zoning, all that's allowed are very small copy track identification signs, which would not be visible for folks to, to see the church, and they want to do something nice with the crosses and a, and a nice signage for the church. So, in evaluating our options, where options were either A, go to the board of adjustment and get a sign variance, which I have done before, but they're not particularly favored at the board of adjustment, or to rezone the property. And in looking at this site, with the site being designated as community mixed use and being designated for this zoning already, we decided to proceed with a rezoning consistent with what future land use map calls for, consistent with what this area calls for. And that's the reason for the rezoning, the C X four designation. And that's what's, before you, staff has already noted, is consistency with the future land use map as well as other comprehensive plan policies. I will note that we did have two neighborhood meetings in connection with this. First neighborhood meeting with folks, you know, within five hundred feet, we had one person attend who was just, wanted to know what was going on. We had a second neighborhood meeting, three pope, three people attended, same thing, just was curious of what was going on. We, we informed them, we've had no concerns or opposition to this rezoning, to my knowledge. And so with that, again, want to be respectful of time, I'm happy to answer any questions, but we'd ask that the commission vote for a favorable recommendation.
Thank you so much. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak in support of this project? Seeing none, we'll open up public comment for those support, I'm sorry, those in opposition, those opposed to this case have a total of ten minutes to speak. And seeing none, we'll close, close public comment and bring it back to the table for any comments from commissioners, questions? Commissioner Iver.
For staff, I thought, for years we've been having issues with the sign ordinance and sign complexities and that type of thing. I thought, I thought the staff, I thought we were, the city was looking at doing a special sign submittal or something. I thought that was in the works a couple of years ago. It just seems like this is a, this is a blunt tool to put a sign up, so it just seems a little odd to me.
As far as I know, we are still talking about that. I've met with some text change, people on our text change team, and as far as I know, there's not like any actual proposed motion going through, but like, we have talked about it, and we have also had another church reach out to us on false news with a very similar, basically the same request, rezoning just to allow for a larger sign, so.
So, would rezoning it increase the tax value?
I, I would assume so.
So the county levies the tax, they assess property based on current use, generally that's where they start, and if your current use is well maintained, that's generally how they evaluate you. Now, if, if your property is in disrepair and redevelopment seems imminent, they may consider the zoning in that regard. But also, I would note that the church's taxes, should be tax exempt. I hope they are exercising their um, opportunity there, so it should not be a concern, I would say, in this instance.
Thank you. Any other questions? Entertainer motion? Commissioner, Vice President Bennett.
Thank you. In regard to case Z seven twenty-five, I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, contained in the agenda materials and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to approval of the minutes, we have two sets of minutes for May thirteenth and May twenty-seventh. I believe Commissioner Alwell has emailed some changes, is that correct, to the minutes?
Correct. There was a mismatch between the roll call and the number count for the vote on one of the cases. I'd have to.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments to the minutes? None, then with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Uh, move to approve with the given amendments.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Motion second, further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you very much. Onto report, other business, report of the chair. I'd like to officially welcome Mark Shelburne to the table. We were so glad he was here today. And also, I just wanted to announce, this is our final meeting of the fiscal year, so we will hold our chair election, our leadership election shortly. My term on the commission ends this fall, so I am not seeking reelection to any leadership position in order to ensure a smooth transition into the future. But since this is my last meeting as chair, I just wanted to take a moment to thank my fellow commissioners that are here, all of the ones current, past, and also in the past as well. I wanted to thank Bynum Walter and our dedicated team of staff, also past and present that have served, and the members of the public who continue to engage thoughtfully in all of our work at home. It's been a true privilege to serve our city as chair for the last two years and to serve on this commission for the last nearly six years under four different city councils. We have faced complex dynamics and decisions, or for our city, and we have worked together with integrity, thoughtfulness, and shared commitment for our community's long-term well-being, particularly at this table. And in today's polarized environment, I'm just especially proud of how this commission has had such a collaborative spirit all around the table, in the ways that we've really listened to each other, even and especially when we disagreed. It's just, I feel like it's been a bright spot in a, in a tough couple of years, looking at government, and I feel like this place has really been different, and I'm very proud of that. So, I leave this role confident that the commission is in strong hands moving forward, and will continue to shape the city to be a livable and inclusive and forward-looking place to live. So, thank you all for the opportunity to serve. And with that, we can move down for a report of the members.
It's a pleasure to be here. No report.
Welcome, Commissioner Neptune.
Yeah. And um. Oh, I didn't realize this is your first meeting too.
Sorry.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, it's my, my first meeting, so it's a privilege to be here at the table, again.
Thank you, Chair Miller, for your service. We appreciate it. And committee of the whole will be meeting on Thursday at four P M. Can we just confirm quorum from who's, with who's here? One, two, three, four, five, six. We have quorum, thank you. That's it for me?
Nicole.
Yes.
Again, I just, I have a work event, so if you need me, just text me and I'll.
Okay, will do, thank you.
I'd rather not, but if you need me, let me know.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Unless, unless I'm mistaken, there will be no text change committee meeting for the rest of June, and we have July off, so we will get back to it in August. No personal report.
Say that with some gusto.
Uh, Commissioner Mokaya, any report? Commissioner Mokaya, any report?
Oh, I thought you said Patty. I was like, who's Patty?
Oh, no.
Um, no, no for me, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cochran.
No report.
No report.
Excellent, and moving on to our next item, election of the officers. Under our rules of procedure, each June, the planning commission shall elect a chair and vice chair to serve the following year, June, from July one to June thirtieth of the next fiscal year. So today, we will elect both of those positions. Before we move on to any motions, is there any discussion on this item? Then, seeing none, I, with, with a great honor, after five years of serving together, would like to make a motion to elect Nicole Bennett as the next chair of the planning commission to serve our next year.
Second.
Third.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to working together. And next is on to the motion, or the election of the vice chair. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to move to recommend that we elect Commissioner Fox, in absence, as the vice chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you so much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes. Any further discussion?
I'm kidding.
Not here to object. That's what happens. All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Moving on to report of the assistant director.
Congratulations on completing another fiscal year of service of the Planning Commission. We've done a ton of work this year. Enjoy your time off in July. I would just ask that all of you, as we come back to work in August, if you will not be able to attend a Planning Commission meeting, please email planning commission@rallyandc.gov